Alright, everybody, calling this meeting to order. This is the July meeting. Yeah. It is now six oh eight P M. We will start off with the initial convening business. The first item of business is the election of officers. So we will start with Chair. Are there any nominations for the Chair for the next term, starting today and going through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty four?
Winston raises his hand.
Okay, Winston?
Yes, I nominate you Chair to be continuing Chair.
I am going to respectfully decline nominations for Chair. Is there, are there any other nominations for Chair? Anyone raising their hand?
Rafia.
Rafia?
I nominate Michelle Matson for Chair.
Yeah, okay, so Michelle has been nominated. Did someone else say something too? I couldn't tell. Margaret? Okay, Michelle. Are there any other nominations for Chair?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I need to decline. I have too much on my plate right now.
Okay.
Can we have Winston? Would Winston be amenable to being the Chair?
So are you nominating him? Because yeah, you can do that. Okay.
Yes.
So Margaret is nominating Winston for Chair. Are there any other nominations?
I'll nominate Winston.
Okay, and so.
I nominate Winston.
So Dan is seconding Winston's nomination.
I'll third.
Rafia, is that for Winston too?
Yes.
Okay, so Rafia too. Are there any other nominations for Chair? Hearing none, we will do a vote on having a board member Winston Welch, the current Vice Chair, having him become the Chair. Dylan, if you can do a roll call.
Absolutely. I'm sorry, Steve, you're being, please state the name of the person you're voting for, or you can stamp. Alan.
Winston.
Boydell.
Winston.
Decker.
Winston.
Hasina.
Winston.
Knight.
Winston.
Matson.
Winston.
Merchi.
Winston.
Velasco.
Winston.
Welch.
Winston.
Weitzel.
Winston.
Wong, sorry, Bruce Wong. Bruce, are you there? Linda Wong. Alright, congratulations Winston, ten votes in favor. You are the Chair. Thank you.
Alright, so Winston, for the transition, you can take over from here.
Okay, well, welcome, everybody. I wasn't expecting that, but obviously, we need to get, have a Chair. And I want to, I guess, first thank our outgoing Chair for a really, I thought, great year and keeping us all in order as much as we possibly could be, and acting professionally and courteously the whole year. And I hope that we, I can follow in his footsteps and that we all have a very copacetic board and that we are model aloha for each other and our community. So I guess at this point, let's continue with the Vice Chair position. Are there any nominations for Vice Chair?
Hi, this is Dylan here in person. I would like to nominate Arlene, if she wouldn't mind.
Okay, thank you. Arlene Velasco. Are there any of the nominations for Vice Chair?
I'll nominate Arlene.
Okay, so we have a second here in person for Arlene.
Any other nominations for Vice Chair? And Arlene, are you, are you there in person then?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Then let's call for a vote. Mr. Buck, if you can help us with that.
Absolutely. Same rules apply, please state the name of the person you're voting for. Alan.
Arlene.
Boydell.
Arlene.
Decker.
Arlene.
Hasina.
Arlene.
Knight.
Arlene.
Matson.
Arlene.
Merchi.
Arlene.
Velasco.
Arlene.
Welch.
Arlene.
Weitzel.
Arlene.
Bruce Wong.
Arlene.
Linda Wong. Alright, congratulations, Arlene, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
There was eleven in favor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for stepping up, Arlene. Next, we have the Treasurer, I'm sorry, the Secretary position. Do I have any nominations for Secretary?
I nominate Margaret.
I'll second Margaret.
Margaret.
No. Thank you. I nominate Rafia.
No, no, sorry, I decline that. I have so much in my head, not now.
I nominate Michelle Matson.
Hi, Chair, this is Dylan Weitzel.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to nominate John Boydell.
Okay. So we have Michelle Matson and John Boydell. Are there any other nominations for Secretary? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Buck, will you call the roll for the vote?
Thank you. Please state your name.
Chair, can we have a discussion on the nomination?
It.
Not necessarily, but if it's point of order.
Not, not typically unless you would like to accept or decline or give a reason for declining or something of that nature.
No, I just wanted to state my position on doing the Secretary role. I accept, I accept the nomination, but I think there's two, between the two choices now. I wanted to state my position on the Secretary. How, how I would do the Secretary.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with it. Yep, go ahead.
So I was Secretary for most of the last two years. And if the Board chooses to reelect me, then I would continue to recommend that the Board adopt a draft of the minutes based on the draft provided by the N C O. And conforming to the Sunshine Law by including a link to the recorded minutes and a summary with timestamps. So that readers who want more details can go, go read them, go hear them, see them themselves. And so as those who have attended these meetings in the past are, I'm sure, aware that there's some different views on how to do the minutes, how much details the minute should include. I would accept corrections of errors. But I wouldn't support revisions or additional details. As I think that it would be more fair to let the recording, the, the actual speakers speak for themselves. And it would, it would be more fair to the the other people who provide written testimony and who present testimony on, you know, like a presentation of visual testimony. I think that there's no way to convey all the details in the minutes. And so I think it would be unfair to include, to favor the oral testimony in the minutes. Because we can't include everything in the minutes. I think then that would make them not useful and not as accurate.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Matson?
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to say?
As long as you're giving some time to this, our new Chair, thank you so much. I did post on the drive, all the corrections to the minutes that have not been approved yet. As a result of exactly what is happening with the minutes being chopped down by the Neighborhood Commission Executive Secretary and our, our meetings being cut short. We've never been going through this before. Been on the Board almost thirty years. And, and the way things are now, I really respect our former Chair Dylan and our Neighborhood Assistant Dylan. Different people, same name. I think they're doing a wonderful job. They really have a very good, clear, fresh perspective on things and, and a technical perspective. I am very concerned about the policies that have been internally imposed at the Commission Office. I think there is a lot to be looked at at this point. I know other Neighborhood Boards are getting together. There's a meeting in August. It is really gearing up. And I just want to keep things on track. And, and very logical and reasonable, fair, open and, and transparent. We need more transparency and openness on our Boards. We don't need to be shut down and, and then not be able to get things done. So I just want to say, according to the State Statute, Section ninety-two dash nine, the minutes under the first section, the Board shall keep written or recorded minutes of all meetings unless otherwise required by law. Neither a full transcript nor a recording of the meeting is required. But the minutes shall give a true reflection of the matters discussed at the meeting and the views of the participants. For a while, until our new N A came onto our Board, we weren't getting any of that for several months. Written minutes shall include, and I'll just mention a couple of things, the substance of all matters, proposed, discussed, or decided. And any other information that any member of the Board requests be included or reflected in the minutes. I remember making a request at a meeting to have a certain, a certain piece of information included in the minutes. That did not happen. But the, the, the most interesting thing here is the neck is, is the other section regarding remote meeting, meetings by interactive conference technology. Chapter ninety-two, Section three point seven. And there's only one thing in here that I really want to highlight, and it is on the drive. It is B six. When practicable, Boards shall record meetings open to the public and make the recording of any meeting electronically available to the public as soon as practicable after a meeting. And until a time as the minutes required by Section ninety-two dash nine are electronically posted on the Board's website. So you are required to have written minutes, and they are required to be a true reflection of the substance of the meetings and the views of the participants. And this is what we need to get back to. I'm sorry, it's more work for the Neighborhood Commission Office. I'm sure they're asked to do other things by other members of the administration. But it is the, the mission of the Neighborhood Commission to serve the Boards, no matter how long their meetings are, to get things done and, and to have accurate minutes. And maybe things will subside on this, but I, I just want to reiterate that. I've mentioned it all before. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for both of you for standing up. And I see a hand. Is that Dylan or?
Yes, Chair. Could I have a brief moment to just add something to everything? Member Matson just said, real brief. Yes, Member Matson was correct in signing ninety-two dash nine. That's Section A, though. There's also a Section B. And that just states that if you have a video recording, that can satisfy the minutes, but a written summary must follow and must accompany this video recording. And so we followed that, and that just requires date, time, and place, members present, when they leave, when they enter, all timestamps of motions made and by which members. And that's basically the gist of it, and then we summarize each item. So I just wanted to throw that in there. That's all. If you're ready for the vote, Chair?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Buck. If you would call for each member's vote.
Mr. Chair, I believe there is, there's a lot that's open-ended that can be interpreted in different ways. The Neighborhood Commission has one way at this point with a certain Executive Director. Also, the legislators interpreted it a certain way. It's very clear. I believe that former Chair Dylan was correct about ninety-two dash nine A. But there is again ninety-two, Section three point seven, that requires whenever a recording is posted as soon as possible after the meeting, it requires the minutes to be posted as soon as they are available. So we need to take these into consideration. This will be a subject of very heavy discussion at forthcoming meetings between Boards. And so I think we should just leave it at that and, and see what we can do to the best of our abilities and get through this as easily as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. I know we've gone around and around on this as a Board, and I I think that, you know, my position on this is that the minutes shall give a true reflection of matters discussed at the meeting, of views of participants. And I think that's critical for the functioning of the Board, whether or not we have electronic minutes, I'm sorry, a, a video minutes as well. We didn't have that a couple of years ago. We all relied on the written minutes, which were extensive and excellent. And so that's where my personal preference lies, but let's go ahead and take a vote and go from there.
Absolutely. So the motion's on the table. We have for Secretary Boydell and Matson. So please state the name of the person when I call your name. Alan.
Boydell.
Boydell. Decker.
Boydell.
Hasina.
Can you say that, Rafia? I don't think you're on.
Oh, yeah, muted.
Matson.
Thank you. Knight.
Boydell.
Matson.
Matson.
Merchi.
Matson.
Velasco.
Boydell.
Welch.
Matson.
Weitzel.
Boydell.
Bruce Wong.
Boydell.
Linda Wong.
Linda, are you there? You gotta unmute yourself. Go ahead, Linda. Say it again.
I didn't know I said anything. I just got on.
Oh, okay. Well, we were just voting for Secretary either David Boydell or Michelle Matson.
Oh, geez, how many voted for what? Oh, I vote for Michelle Matson.
You'll vote for Michelle Matson? Okay.
Alright, so the votes are seven. Seven for Boydell. Five for Matson. We're gonna do the vote one more time. We need to get to eight to reach quorum for a winning vote. So I'll call the roll call one more time. Alan.
Boydell.
Boydell. Hasina.
Matson.
Knight.
Boydell.
Matson.
Matson.
Merchi.
Matson.
Velasco.
Boydell.
Welch.
Matson.
Weitzel.
Boydell.
Bruce Wong.
Boydell.
And Linda Wong.
Action.
Alright, nothing changed. We'll have to take this at the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to Treasurer. Do I have any nominations for Treasurer?
Who was that?
I cannot name myself as Treasurer.
Yeah, sure.
Chair, this is Dylan Weitzel. I'll nominate Dan for Treasurer.
Okay, Dan.
Dylan Weitzel.
And Dylan?
I'll decline the nomination, but thank you.
Margaret, Merchi.
Margaret's declining. Okay.
There's nothing to do, Margaret.
Bruce Wong. I Bruce Wong. I nominate Bruce Wong.
I, I decline. I got too much going on.
I'll nominate Linda Wong.
Linda Wong.
Okay, I've done it before.
So we have Dan and Linda. Are there any other nominations? Okay, Mr. Buck, would you?
So the motion on the table is to elect Treasurer. It's between Dan Decker and Linda Wong. Please state the name of the person you're voting for. Alan.
Can you repeat that?
Decker or Linda Wong?
Okay. Decker.
Boydell. Decker.
Ah, Decker.
Hasina.
Linda.
Knight.
Decker.
Matson.
Linda Wong.
Merchi.
Linda Wong.
Velasco.
Linda.
Welch.
Linda.
Weitzel.
Decker.
Bruce Wong.
Linda.
Linda Wong.
Linda Wong.
Alright, the votes are seven for Wong and five for Decker. I'll do the vote one more time. Alan.
Wong.
Boydell. One more time?
Linda Wong.
Thank you. Decker.
Ah, Decker.
Hasina.
Linda.
Knight.
Decker.
Matson.
Linda.
Merchi.
Linda Wong.
Velasco. Welch.
Wong.
Weitzel.
Decker.
Bruce Wong.
Linda.
And Linda Wong.
Linda Wong.
Alright, congratulations, Linda. Nine votes to five. Thank you. Or sorry, nine to three on that second round. Thank you.
Mahalo. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. As we know, any functioning democracy needs people to step up and you all have stepped up. And it's members of your community sincerely appreciate it, even if they don't always tell you. So I'm telling you. Next, we have meeting date, time, location, format. I would propose that we keep the same meeting date of Thursdays.
Chair, sorry to interrupt. You just missed over filling of vacancies.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Oh, that's a big one. Filling of one vacancy in Sub District Two. Sub District Two, do we have any folks who wish to step up? For Sub District Two?
Is anybody here in person?
Anyone in person or anyone online?
Can you describe that district, please?
What is Sub District Two roughly, Mr. Buck?
It's a great question.
I'm gonna say it's the middle one. I think we're, we're two if we're around sort of Kapahulu and Date, and I think.
Yeah, yeah, it's the Kapahulu area.
And number one is.
Addresses, I don't have the map on me, but everything is available on our website. If in the future, anybody does want to check out where they live.
And then three is down by Close to the Park, and one is up in St. Louis Heights. So anyone for Sub District Two at this time?
On Aloha, I, I'm excited.
Okay, well, let your friends and neighbors know that there's a position open. Let's move on to Sub District Three. We have two vacancies. Is there anyone who's interested in Sub District Three? Stepping up for Board service. Okay, again, tell your friends and neighbors, we need some representation on the Board. It's a nice chance to step in. Okay, then let's move on to C, meeting date, time, location, and format. I would recommend that we keep the same hybrid format, same date of the, of the month, which is the second Thursday at six P M, also at the Alawai Golf Club. For those who wish to attend in person. Are there any other suggestions?
Chair.
Yes, sir.
I would like to suggest limiting the meeting time to three hours as we had it before.
Well, I'm not. Yeah, I'm not sure. Sure, and maybe Mr. Buck can help guide us here, or Dylan. Is this about the total duration of the meeting time as well? And do we have the option to have Ollo for four hours if we start at six and end at ten? And for Mr. Buck's time?
At this time, the limit is three hours.
And, and that's determined by?
So theoretically, let's say we were in person only, then the camera guy and myself would leave at three hours, and the Board and the public would be allowed to stay. At that point, the minutes would be the Secretary's duty to capture everything that the N A left for.
Okay.
But if you want the virtual, then we can't leave the virtual side out of it because I'm the one with all the equipment, and then so is the camera guy.
Are there any Boards that have longer than three hours, Dylan?
No.
So is this a Neighborhood Commission decision? Or Neighborhood Secretary, Executive Secretary decision, or where does that come from?
There's multiple factors. So it's not just our contract. We also have the facility contract, and a lot of facilities will not let you go over the three hours. Some of them actually have less than three hours. So the Boards are actually stopping at two and a half so that they can help close up and be out of the facility within three hours.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I don't see that there's gonna be probably a strong desire for us to have to physically all go down to the clubhouse now that we're used to Zoom. So I will, I mean, if it's gonna ending at, at nine, then it'll be six to nine, and we will stay within that timeframe as best as we can unless some circumstance comes that we lose electricity in the world, and then we'll have other issues. So otherwise, if I don't hear any other ideas or objections, that we will meet six to nine, second Tuesday. Yes, ma'am.
Again, it was only in the last couple of years when the administration changed that we had all of these restrictions on our public meetings. And as you know, our district has very complex issues at times. Sometimes we have meetings that only go until late 30. But the last meeting, we couldn't even have our elected officials' reports. So this is a real detriment to being able to keep up with the issues in the city and the state and have reports from our elected officials, especially during the time of the legislature. And apparently, the contracts were all cut down by the Neighborhood Commission Office because we never had this problem before. So I would suggest that we find a way to continue our meetings if absolutely necessary. So we don't shut people off who've spent time sitting and waiting to speak and give reports. Or shut off the public who wants to speak and has the right to speak on every agenda item. This is not a democratic process. And I think perhaps there should be an executive committee to discuss this sort of thing and come up with a solution, whether we do it ourselves or ask the city to not sign contracts to cut us off.
Okay, thank you. And I share your concerns. Yeah, I share your concerns exactly. So maybe, and this is something that I think many of the neighborhood boards have concerns about. So, but it's gonna be a larger discussion, but maybe we can look at that as well, how we might be able to do this. Yes, sir.
This is Dylan Whitesell. Yeah, just to reiterate what Dylan Buck said, I mean, we're talking about things that are out of our control. For example, the gentleman who oversees the facility at the location we're at right now, he has to lock up by a certain point. They're like we cannot, because he has to lock up and he has to go home and he's on work. Like, this is not an NCO thing. He takes the bus. He has a he has a time limit. He has a contract. He has to work. So this keeps getting brought up that it's a it's all these different things and it's unfair, but we're talking about, I'm sorry that everyone who's online right now can be on for five hours because they're sitting at home. But for everyone else, they have jobs. They have work. They have contracts that they have to close things up. And so we're beating a dead horse over this, grandstanding over it. And I'm sure there's gonna be a rebuttal to me after this that's gonna take another five minutes. And this is why we can't get things in three hours.
And I appreciate that. But I would say that before we met on on Zoom, we did stay longer than three hours in that same building and we were able to for some somehow, maybe the the fellow who locks up there had it longer hours in his contract. I think these are structural issues that we can look at overcoming. But it's not necessarily a stead in stone thing. Some some boards have gone on much longer than ours did. Imagine that. So but for this moment right now, until maybe some of us can do some research into this, if this is possible, talk to some folks in the city. I see Mr. Cruckey's here. And he can maybe relay these concerns as well. And I know that there's a number of people interested in asking the Neighborhood Commission Office about these issues. But for right now, I would suggest that we move on with the given time and place. And if it comes to the point where we have an extra ability to, if we need longer times than and that becomes an option, then we can look at that then. But until that time, let's deal with reality as it is, if I might suggest.
Hi. Sorry, I'm Angie. First meeting. Um, I have a question about that because I know before last time I was here. It just seemed like the elected officials didn't get time to speak. So is it also a point that we could just rearrange the order of our meetings so that we can move the elected officials hot like sooner to the beginning or even the community members speaking time further up? So then we could do just rearrange it, not prioritize, but just get make sure that opportunity is locked in.
Yep, thank you for that. Yeah, and we and we can actually change up the agenda as we like. I think the the reason why we have it the way that it is is so that our first responders can come give their reports and then leave. And then community concerns and public testimony comes after that, which the elected officials should be listening to because it's exactly what the, you know, at the heart of what this board does, followed by then, you know, our representatives. So a lot of the questions that the community brings up, the government representatives ask immediately after that. I think you know, sometimes we just don't have enough time. And that's why this idea of, you know, if we need to run over, it would be nice to have that flexibility. But as of this moment, we don't have it. So let's deal with reality and come back and revisit this as we find out more information and if and when the situation changes is my suggestion. Yes, sir.
Chair, Dylan here. Could we just get a motion in a second to retain, to make this official? We can do unanimous consent, no objections type of vote?
I I would make a motion that by unanimous consent, we keep things as they are right now until such a time that that there is some any other flexibility if that time ever came.
A second.
I abstain.
Are there any? Uh huh, okay.
Sent in by Dan Decker.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Are there any other objections or abstentions besides Michelle Mattson?
Point of information, Chair.
Yes, sir.
The way that things currently are is with the three hour time limit?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
And Chair, since one member did abstain, we should do a roll call vote. I can do it real fast.
Thank you. Yes, please.
All right, thank you. Motion on the table is to retain the current meeting date, time, date, location, and format of hybrid. Allen.
Yes.
Boidel.
Yes.
Decker.
Yes.
Hasina.
Yes.
Knight.
Yes.
Mattson.
Clarification, I think everything was rolled into one motion. Don't we have separate motions on on these items?
No, it's a slate, single slate, everything together to retain.
Well, I'd support everything else, but I have to abstain if you're gonna roll that.
Okay. Murchy.
Abstain.
Velasco.
Yes.
Welch.
Yes.
Whitesell.
Yes.
Bruce Wong.
Yes.
Linda Wong. All right, the motion passes with ten in favor, no nays and two abstentions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buck. Next is determining the recess schedule. I have been, I have a position on this that I will share. I don't think this board should recess ever. The business of the people does not recess. And when we take a recess, that is a time when things slip by and we don't necessarily have the option to respond in any coherent fashion. If individuals, members cannot come to every meeting, that's completely understandable and I will not be able to meet all all of the meetings, I'm sure. But in lieu of that, I would recommend that we hold a regular meeting schedule without breaks for the entirety of the 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 two years. That is actually my motion. I will motion that we meet every month without a break for these two years.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. Does the chair make motions or do members make motions?
It's a good point. Help me out here. I'm gonna need
So, sorry, Dylan here. Just to clarify, the chair is a regular member of the board, but best practice would be for the chair to not make motions, but you are within your rights to do so.
I'm gonna exercise that right. For this motion.
Do we have a second to scheduling no recesses?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Um, I will say that we, if I'm recognized, Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. There have been times when we recessed in December and something's come up that we really wanted to address and we didn't have the, we weren't looking enough to be able to answer what was going on in the city. Sometimes things come around at Christmas time because everybody's busy. It's happened before and I would say that we really need to have the option to be here every month.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other discussion?
I will
Arlie, I have a question. Is it a requirement of the city that we recess?
Nope.
No. Okay, Margaret?
We just lost Anton from the city, which is a bummer.
He's there. I see his name. He's probably just
He just said he had to leave.
Oh, he did.
Mm-hmm, it's in the chat.
Oh, I see it. Thank you. Yeah, well, you know, it's, we're getting our first business done and hopefully we'll be able to keep our administrative tasks down to less, but this is an important meeting setting, these things. Okay, then I would say, are there any objections or abstentions to this motion?
Yeah. Yes, I would go no on that.
Yeah, Julia Allen votes no and I, Dylan Whitesell, also vote no.
Okay, Mr. Buck, will you, or I'm gonna call for the vote. Will you?
Yes, motion on the table is to schedule no recesses for this year. Allen.
No.
Boidel.
Hi.
Decker.
Yes.
Hasina.
Yes.
That's a yes, okay.
Mattson.
Abstain.
Murchy.
Yes.
Velasco.
Yes.
Welch.
Yes.
Whitesell.
No.
Bruce Wong.
No.
Linda Wong.
Yes.
You're skitching.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Knight.
Yes.
First meeting.
All right, motion passed with eight in favor, three no and one abstention. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. You know, and we, you're all very conscientious and come to these meetings, so I don't think it's a real issue. And if you you've got to go see the grandkids or whatever, that you're gonna do it anyway. Adoption of oral testimony rules. So at this point, the city council, I think what do we have? A two-minute rule for speaking? Linda, do you have your hand raised?
Um, oh, yeah, I forgot. Sorry, but I do have something to say. I did look it up in the parliamentary procedures and I wish I had more time to read more, but it does say that you can only speak for two minutes.
Okay.
This is after a motion is made that you have something about two minutes. I wish I could, here, I have it right here. Anyway, I wanted to put that in. I'll spread it by it. I have it right here. Let's see.
Okay.
Go ahead and I'll, if I find it, I have it, I wrote it. Go ahead.
Okay, so two minutes is what Linda is listing in the survey parliamentary procedure. It seems like a reasonable amount of time to get something out. David?
Mr. Chair. I would like to keep the same oral testimony rule we had before, which was the two-minute limit. But after two times speaking in one meeting by one person, that person's time limit would be 30 seconds for the rest of the that meeting for each oral testimony item, for each agenda item. Except for the the community concern slash public testimony, which would still be a two-minute limit.
Okay.
So I move to make that the oral testimony rule.
Michelle?
I would like to
Sorry, hang on a second, Linda. Michelle?
I'm sorry, I'll let Linda go ahead.
Okay, Linda?
I'm reading from Basic Provisions and Procedures from Robert's Rules, the whole edition. And it says, no one is entitled to the floor a second time in debate on the same motion on the same day. As long as any member that's going on the floor. So you have to take the people that haven't had a chance to speak before anybody could speak again.
Yep.
So I'd like to add to our oral our rules.
Yeah.
Our speaking rules.
I think we generally follow that. Okay, Michelle?
Okay.
Thank you, Linda. Michelle?
Yes, I take in all respect and fairness to the participants, all the participants of the meeting. Those who take the time to attend and log on to our meetings who have things to say. Our elected representatives, and this is apart from reports that, of course, need to be longer. The two-minute recommendation is fair. I think the city council has a different levels of time limits. In fact, for public hearings, it's three minutes per person. So we need, we need input, we need information, we need resources. And if everybody is restricted to speaking only two minutes for the whole meeting, as we've experienced before, even the board members can't do a good job. So I support the two-minute general rule. And then perhaps we should have different levels for reports would be longer. And if there is really a heavy issue with a lot of speakers, it would be up to the chair's discretion to say, please try to keep your testimony to one minute. So everyone will be able to speak because that is the priority to allow everyone to speak.
Yes, good. Thank you. Linda, do you still have your? Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Chair, this is Dylan Whitesell.
Yep.
Yeah, so I think part of the equation is, you know, how long people speak, but the other part is what are the parameters on how many times people can speak? You know, I can speak right now, then this could count as part of my two minutes, but then if someone else something, do I get to rebut that person or do I get to talk again later after everyone else has talked? Like, I could basically, right now, what we're getting is is some board members will have two-minute chunks, but they'll end up having eight minutes or 10 minutes on one topic because they keep getting another time to talk over and over and over, and that adds up. So what are the parameters? Is it just two minutes one time? And then you're done talking on it or what?
It says in the other rules that you go back.
Yeah, Robert says if no one else has anything to say, you can talk one more time, but is everyone okay with having a maximum of four minutes on a topic?
I hope the topics aren't that important, but I don't see why not.
And who's that? Is that Dan?
That was Dan.
Okay. I mean, I
Well, I think we should follow Robert's rules.
We're not obligated to follow. I don't think Robert's rules, we, I mean, it's a good guideline, but I also understand that sometimes a rebuttal is needed, but perhaps it could be
Well, I, I'm sorry, Chair, but I personally believe that no one should be rebutting other board members if they're sharing their opinion.
There may be a
And I think that's a big part of what delays things.
So maybe it's a follow-up to a clarification at times, which is needed. And I can see, for example, if I asked a question of the Honolulu Fire Department and then I, you know, asked a question of somebody who's testifying in public, then am I limited to 30 seconds for any of the other things that are coming down the pike? That's my concern is that anybody, not just me, but any anybody is restricted. So if we do our best to be succinct the first time around to realize that we're at some levels beating a dead horse because our positions are probably known or reinforced by others, then I think the two limit, two meeting minute per person that we have for public concerns and testimony should be uniform basically throughout our our speaking time with the provision that if if it's something that we need to address later, that we come back and say, hey, it's too, it's too much. We need to cut. "Hey, it's too, it's too much. We need to cut." Linda?
Okay, well, I'm just saying, we've seen how that's worked out so far.
Well, let's, let's try extra hard this year. Linda?
This is Arlene.
Oh.
Go ahead, Arlene, sorry.
I'd, I'd like to add my input on this because I have found it very frustrating the last several meetings to hear the same thing being said over and over again, meanwhile, our, our city officials are sitting in front of me. It's very upsetting to me. So I would really like everyone to stick to the two minutes when you need to. And if at the very end of the meeting, if we have time and everyone's been succinct, then we go back to another topic. That would be my suggestion.
I think that sounds totally reasonable. Thank you, Arlene.
Uh, Chair, to move things along, can I get a, a motion with a second? And if there was any more last-minute discussion on a topic, we can, but then we should go to a vote. So-
Okay.
To make everything official, a motion.
So, David, you made a motion. Um, do you wish to amend that?
Did I get a second on the, that my motion was with, um, you know, two minutes per, um, per agenda item, but after speaking twice, um, for each person in that one meeting, after speaking twice, they're limited to thirty seconds for agenda item for the rest of the meeting. Except for the community concerns and public testimony. I, I don't know if I got a second on that, but that's, that's a contentious thing to, you know, reduce the speaking time limit.
Okay. Is there any second to that?
I have a question.
Oh, we have one question from Knight.
Yeah, are you saying that, so whenever you say like per, what, did you say like agenda item?
Per agenda item.
Per agenda item. So is that the big number or the small number?
Uh, so one agenda item would be HPD. So, a board member would be able to speak for two minutes. They would also get another chance to speak for two. After that point, every agenda item for the rest of the meeting, you'll be limited to thirty seconds.
Okay, just to clarify so that we're all on the same page.
Um, the only difference was that community concerns, um, that will be two minutes, no matter what.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there a second?
A second.
I have Decker's second. Any last-minute discussion?
I would call, please call the role.
All right. Uh, just to clarify, the motion is to retain the previous term's oral testimony of two minutes per agenda item. You'll also get that on your second time speaking. Following that, your second time speaking, you will be limited to thirty seconds. Uh, the community concerns portion will remain at two minutes. Allen?
Aye.
Boidle?
Aye.
Decker?
Aye.
Pacino?
Aye.
Knight?
Aye.
Matson?
No.
Murchy?
Aye.
Velasco?
Aye.
Welch?
Abstain.
White soul?
Aye.
Bruce Wong?
Aye.
Linda Wong? Linda, you might be on mute. One more time, Linda Wong.
Um, I'm gonna uh, abstain.
Abstain. Wait one second. Motion passes with nine in favor, one nay, and two abstentions. Thank you. Uh, Chair, we do have the better audio visual working now. Can we call a brief recess to get that situated? Just a moment.
Sure.
Thank you. Recess at seven oh two.
Winston?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know if everyone understood that if you speak one minute on one police report or ask questions, and then on the mayor's report, you speak for another minute and a half with questions or comments. And then another thirty seconds, perhaps we're Board of Water Supply and Red Hill.
That would be a long time ago, about.
Your time's up. You can't speak anymore except for thirty seconds, uh, or ask questions for thirty seconds on, on each uh, public officials' report. Are the, are, is the public restricted to this as well? Are they muzzled like this?
I think everyone's restricted, and, you know, this is the board, I think, understands what this is, and we may find it too restrictive. And if that's the case, we can revisit it. Uh, but-
Certainly.
For, for, for right now, I mean, it'll encourage us to be as brief as possible. I realize I don't like the muzzling either, um, but let's do the best that we can with what we've got. Okay, Dylan, are you back?
Yes, can you hear us?
Yes, I don't see any better visuals on there, but-
Okay, do you see us now?
No.
I see one, one of you all sort of together.
That should be a Lello videographer as the name, and then that's us on the stage.
Yeah.
I, I have that now.
Okay. All right.
Well, yeah, as long as everyone can see us, we're gonna get going. Um, you can call it back to order, Chair.
Okay, thank you. So we're on F, Establishment of Committees and Membership. For those who are committee chairs, can you please, who have been committee chairs in the past, will you please state what your committee is, and if you're willing to serve as the, uh, committee chair again, and what members you have, and, uh, if you, uh, if you're open for other membership? Margaret, you wanna start?
Sure. Public safety and traffic or transportation.
Okay, public safety and, and, and traffic and, traffic and transportation. Okay.
I think that's it.
Okay, and do you have any members right now that you're aware of?
Rafina, uh, volunteered. Uh, we haven't had a meeting, but I have been, um, in touch with, um, people. Actually, I'm meeting with Ed Sniffen on, um, Monday morning.
Okay, so you have, you, you're- Ed, are you willing to stay as chair?
Yes, and I have, um, conversations about the complete streets and other things too, so.
Okay.
There's lots of things going on.
Okay, are there other folks that would like to be on that? Uh, um, Dylan, can you help me out here? Am I, do I appoint them, or is it by, uh, vote, or both, or how does that work?
So we can do another slate motion to, um, remind everybody that from the last term, we had, um, committees was Laahie Avenue, Parks and Recreation, and Environment, Zoning, Traffic and Public Safety. We could have one motion to retain all of those, and we can also be open to a new motion to establish any new committees. Uh, we could knock that first one out to retain everything, and then we could go into, okay, who's the chair and who are the members? Uh, the chair is allowed to appoint.
The chair of the committees are allowed to appoint.
Oh, the chair of the board.
The chair of the board. Okay, so we had one more, which is Zoning and Planning Committee, uh, that I think we missed in there. So zoning and planning, Laahie, uh, public safety, transportation and traffic, and parks, recreation and environment. Getting four. Are there any others that I'm not missing, that I'm not getting?
Uh, could you use the microphone, Arlene?
This is Arlene. Um, I would like to establish another committee, if possible, relating to the cesspools in our area, all the ones in Capulanee Park and the ones surrounding Diamond Head. And it's, um, been a problem with contaminating our local ocean waters, and I'd like to really get involved with establishing a committee so that we can work with the city and hopefully get the timeline much quicker than twenty fifty to convert these cesspools and hook them up. Around our area, it's very, I think, reasonable to hook them up to this, our existing sewer system.
Do you have a name?
Um, I think it, yes. The name I would like to would be a, uh, that a task force for for establishing a timeline, a quicker timeline for the conversion of cesspools in our neigh- in the Diamond Head Neighborhood Board Five area.
Do you have a shorter name?
Um, how about Cesspool Conversion Task Force?
Thank you. Do we have task force? Is that even an option to us, or is it a committee?
It's a committee. It could be.
Okay, then let's, Ed, would you chair that committee, Arlene?
Uh, yes.
Okay, then-
Point of order, Mister Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I believe our committees, uh, and, uh, Dylan can weigh in on this as well. I hope, um, our committees are standing committees, they're ongoing committees. This sounds like a, uh, short-term issue, and usually, uh, neighborhood boards don't have task force, but they have task forces, but they have, uh, permitted interaction groups. And those who are interested in this specific subject for this specific time it is being undertaken, uh, that, uh, permitted action group would be functioning, and then once the problem is solved or resolved, then it would not be a standing committee or, or, uh, permitted interaction group anymore because there would be no needs for it. And hopefully, there won't be, but, um, that's just a suggestion out of all due respect for Arlene. I understand this is a very important issue. And also, um, that perhaps the, this is an environmental issue, so, uh, perhaps we have a Parks, Recreation and Environment Committee. We could put it under that, or just separate out Environment and have a broader, uh, 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 more specialized standing committee for Environment that would include that.
I mean, that's fine with me. I just want the issue to be, um, really looked at this year because, um, I'm part of the Surf Rider group that does the water quality testing, and I've seen a huge, a, a very bad trend that's trending towards greater pollution to our beaches. And it's, it is related to the sea level rise and to our cesspools, so I just don't want it to drop. And I don't care about the task force word. You can drop it. It just doesn't matter.
Okay, uh, Dylan, do you have your hand raised?
Yes.
Oh, uh, this is Dylan White soul wing, and I was just gonna say that I, I, I support whatever Arlene wants to do, if she wants to have her own committee, and regardless of the name, we're a neighborhood board. You know, it's, it's not that serious, you know. The, the cesspool thing, though, is serious. It's been decades of, you know, an issue, and if we have someone who's willing to step up and be committed to do it, I don't know why we're arguing over a name. We'll just call it a cesspool committee.
Right. It, it doesn't matter. I'm very concerned about the issue because, like I said, I've been involved with the testing since twenty seventeen, and it, I have seen a disturbing trend.
No, and, and, and that's, thank you for that, Arlene. I, uh, and what Michelle was saying was absolutely true, that the pigs are designed to have a discrete function until that no longer exists. So that was correct, but I, I would propose that of the Parks, Recreation and Environment Committee, that we simply call it the Environment Committee, and then you deal with what you want to in there, whether it's cesspools or pollution, or, um, whatever it is. Does David?
That, that's fine with me.
Okay, David?
Mister Chair, I, um-
I agree. Mister Chair, may I be-
Yeah, just a second, Linda.
I, I, um, speaking of the Laahie, uh, Laahie Avenue Committee, I think it's, um, previous chair resigned from the board, and um, I hope, I'll be corrected if I'm wrong, but I think that the, um, uh, previous Chair White soul, uh, may have disbanded that Laahie Avenue Committee. So I don't-
Okay, thank you.
I'm not sure if that's the current committee.
Is that true, D- uh, Dylan?
I, I didn't disband it, but I think it is accurate that the current, or the chair that was chairing that, um, is no longer a part of the board.
Okay, thank you. And Linda?
Oh, two things. On the Laahie Avenue, I think it should be taken off the agenda because, uh, it's done. And the, um, I, I agree with everyone that we should take the committee that's part, and, and, and let Arlene chair the Environment Committee and do whatever she wants to do under that. And then that's keeping with the, um, Eric Cowe, everything has, is, and has been our standing committees.
Okay, so- Okay, thank you. Um, Dylan, you have-
Thank you, Chair. Uh, yes, just to help speed things along, it sounds like, uh, from consensus from the board, that we would have an Environment Committee, a Planning and Zoning Committee, and a Traffic and Public Safety Committee.
And, uh, I'm sorry, so the Parks and Recreation Committee, which I'm-
The Parks and Rec would fall under Environment based on your recommendation.
Uh, I was proposing that they be two separate committees.
Correct.
Okay. All I'll need at this time is a motion from the board to basically establish everything I just said.
Um, I, motion.
And just to clarify, the motion is that there is a Parks and Recreation Committee, and I'm the chair of that, and I don't know if I can still be the chair of that, but I'm willing to, an Environment Committee that is chaired by Arlene, a Planning and Zoning Committee by Michelle Matson, and a Traffic and Public Safety commit, uh, chaired by Margaret Murchy. And those are four standing committees.
That's good.
Pardon me, Chair. Um, so Parks and Rec, Planning and Zoning, Environment?
Yes.
And the Traffic and Public Safety.
Correct.
All right, and, uh, you cannot be a voting member of the committees. You're allowed to be a non-voting member of every committee, yes. So we would, uh, we would prefer a other board member to be the committee chair for the Parks and Rec. Do we have anyone?
Is there anyone who's willing to do that? I believe I said ex officium of them.
Decker nominated himself. Uh, did anyone else want to be the Parks and Rec Chair? Um, Murchy's raising her hand. All right, uh, Chair, since we have some contention here, can we just vote on these four committees now, and then we'll do membership after?
That's fine. Um, let's-
All right, so the motion on the table, moved by Velasco, seconded by Decker, is to establish the Parks and Recreation Committee, Planning and Zoning Committee, Environment Committee, Traffic and Public Safety Committee. Uh, Allen?
Aye.
Boidle?
Aye.
Decker?
Aye.
Pacino?
Aye.
Knight? Uh, just for clarification, Decker and Knight both said aye. Matson?
Aye.
Murchy?
Aye.
Velasco?
Aye.
Welch?
Aye.
White soul? There was an aye from White soul. Bruce Wong?
Aye.
Linda Wong?
I think she said- Linda?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Unanimous consent. All those committees have been established. We can now discuss membership, Chair.
Okay, so we have Michelle as the Chair of Planning and Zoning, Margaret, Traffic, Public Safety, uh, Arlene as Environment, and for the Parks and Recreation Committee, we have some folks that are interested in chairing that. Linda?
Uh, I was gonna a- ask if the Laahie Committee, if you need to vote on, um, taking that out.
Let's bring that up right after this, just to formally, well, I think we just kicked it off because it wasn't on the, uh, I, I think it, it just naturally, it, it went by the wayside.
Okay.
Um, so Dan has proffered his name to be Chair of the Parks and Environment Committee. Are there others who are willing to step up to that? Margaret? Okay. Margaret and Dan? Are there any others who are interested in being Chair of that?
Suggestion?
Yes, ma'am.
How about having co-chairs?
I think that's an excellent idea, if, if both of our board members are amenable to that.
I'll go ahead and second that.
Is that Dan?
Yes, it's me.
Okay, then, um, we have so for Margaret and Dan to be the co-chairs of that. Okay. I will, if it's in my power to appoint them, then I will make it so.
Chair, this is, uh, Dylan White soul.
Yes, sir.
Um, and this just applies to everyone, but I mean, I would just ask that the people that do take these positions try and make it a point to actually have meetings. I feel like in some ways right now, it kind of comes off like people are getting these chairmanship positions to these committees, but then they don't actually meet. They just use it as a way to say that they're the chair of something, so that way they can use that as kind of a clout to then go talk to people.
I think there's a total validity in that too, because sometimes that you don't, these issues are emergent, and it's not something- and it's not something that's, they necessarily have to have a, a meeting for every month. But I would agree that we should have some meetings regularly that do, um, you know, address issues before. So, we'll take that into, into consideration. Uh, is that Dylan?
Yeah, I'd like to add to that, Mr. Chair. Um, at times, there are not issues pertinent to specific committees. And at times, there are enormous issues, such as the Kool-Aid Tower, that i- is still, uh, a very controversial issue. So, you never know when you're going to have a really big issue that you have to have maybe two meetings a month for, or a meeting every month before the board meeting.
Or every three months. I, I agree with that.
Anything for a while, then, uh, are we to call a meeting and not have anything on the agenda?
Yes, uh, just to clarify, my intent wasn't to say that you have to literally have a meeting every month, but it's, I mean, you can look at how few committee meetings have actually been had over this last year. And we just had a board member here earlier say, "Well, because I'm the Chair of XYZ Committee, I'm gonna go talk to this person. I have a meeting with them next week." And, you know, well, when that committee's been around for months, and when was the last committee meeting for that meeting? And that's just all I'm trying to say about that.
I had a quick question about that. Um, um, so, so these committee meetings, um, these are to be held here, right? I mean, that's part of the Sunshine Law, these committee meetings?
Chair, I can address- Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, so yes, committee meetings have to follow the same guidelines as these board meetings, in the sense that an agenda needs to be publicly posted. That'll be done by our office with the help of whoever is the Chair or co-chair of that committee. You'll send us an agenda, we'll get it posted. You have to have that agenda posted six days before your meeting date, so there are restrictions. And you need a physical meeting location. We will help, but it will be on the Committee Chairs to secure and at least identify a potential location, and then we can see if that's viable. Um, obviously, resources are a question. Did you have something else?
No, I mean, I mean, um, if I want to meet with Merchi, I'd have to wait till the second of the, I mean, I'd have to wait till these meetings, right? I mean, I can't just call Margaret at home and say, "Hey, let's talk about this park committee," right? It'd have to be here.
So, two members are allowed to discuss between each other.
Oh, okay.
But they're not allowed to solicit votes. You might not agree on taking a position. You can have an open dialogue, but no discussion. In general, it's best practice to have everything open in the public. Um, the current issue is that you cannot just have a virtual meeting alone. Legally, you need to have a in-person location. And that could change in the future, next legislation, we'll see. Um, but currently, it is a little difficult. And we recommend that if you have a committee meeting, the easiest thing for everyone involved is to have an in-person only.
Okay, yeah.
Because we can maybe lend out some equipment to help you guys, but you would also need to run it yourself. We don't have enough staff to send people like myself to every committee meeting for every single board.
Sure.
Yeah. Yes, yes, it's open to any time. It's not like the board where they need to meet on special days or times. Yes.
Okay, let's, uh, go first Margaret, and then Linda. Margaret?
I wa- I was just trying to lower my hand.
Um, okay.
But I my meet, I, my meeting with, with, um, that I was talking about with transportation is completely different. And, uh, you know, I'm not trying to take a lead on anything. And, uh, it's, it's, you know, we're all busy.
We're all volunteers and do the best we can.
Right, and if it was something of importance that I thought that, you know, we should all discuss it, then I would definitely bring that to the forefront, bring it to the Neighborhood Board meeting.
Yeah, and it is. And all, all of us need to, uh, help support these Committee Chairs. Um, Linda?
Um, I think that, like, I have a hard time sometimes now getting places. So, having the, a place and a, uh, online, uh, meeting is what I would prefer, like we've been doing. Because like Kaimaki, um, Library, I think it's Kaimaki, uh, has a computer for people to use. And they, uh, also, you can have a virtual meeting there and a physical meeting. So, that way, everybody could come that wanted to come.
I'm gonna defer to Dylan on this and how, but we have to comport with the law and have a, at least a physical location, but perhaps it's something where, you know, a lot of us have a laptop and Wi-Fi, so we could bring that in or just have telephone, um, going while everybody else is there.
Um, yes, Chair, we can discuss, um, options moving forward. Whenever you guys do want to schedule committees, we'll have that discussion offline. Um, I did just want to note that, in, if it's introduced in this next legislation, please support something that might be virtual only as an option for boards if they choose to do so, to make things easier, because that seems to be the general consensus.
Okay.
That's all I have, Chair. We do have, uh, the two co-chairs, Decker and Merchi, for the Parks and Rec. Um, I don't know if there's any more discussion to be had. We do have, uh, our fire department waiting on the side here.
Yes, yes, thank you. And thank you for our fire and police. Uh, Margaret, are you trying to lower your hand or just clapping? Okay, um, so, from this point, just as a clarification, these committees can be staffed by chairs, is that correct, Dylan?
Could you repeat that?
Can the committee members, can the Committee Chairs choose who they want to be on their committees?
Uh, everything should be done in a public meeting. Uh, the appointments can be done quickly by, uh, you, the Chair. Um, so if we do want to go around real quick and say, "Which board member would like to be on which committee?" And then the Chair can say, "I appoint all these members, I'll take that."
Okay, let's do that right now, since we're in, we're doing it. Uh, start with Margaret, Traffic and Safety. Anyone who wants to volunteer for Margaret's Board, besides Rafia?
Go on that one.
And Linda Wong, okay? Any others? And I believe Dylan, I am ex officio on all of these committees, is that correct? Correct. Okay, let's move on. Thank you, ladies, Michelle, for Planning and Zoning. Are there any others who would like to be on the Planning and Zoning at this time?
We've had several, uh, active participants on the Planning and Zoning Committee. A couple of the board members did not run again. Um, so I would just encourage our, our board members who have participated to continue to do so. And then, anyone else who has an interest or expertise in planning or zoning issues, uh, I'd certainly welcome.
Thank you. And, uh, Dylan Buck, can you just, uh, clarify? Can members of the public be on these committees who are not on the board?
Absolutely.
Okay, so let's keep that in mind, folks who are listening. Okay, let's move on to Arlene, um, for our Environment Committee. We have Arlene, and who else would like to, uh, is interested in being on that committee?
Hey, it's Angie, I'll join Arlene.
Okay. And, and Linda Wong, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, ladies. And one more committee we have is, I want to say Public Safety, is that? No?
Yes.
More?
Traffic and Public Safety.
Traffic and Public Safety.
Oh, sorry, no, we just did that one first.
Parks and Environment, Parks Environment. So, Dan and Margaret co-chairing, others who would like to be on that?
It's Parks and Recreation, in a separate committee for Environment.
Thank you, thank you, Parks and Recreation.
I went to be member.
Rafia, okay, thank you. Okay, thank you all for that. And we have now concluded our, I believe, and we can move on, uh, concluding our, um, initial convening business, so thank you all. And, you know, really, it's like, uh, I think we, we showed each other a reasonable amount of aloha here. And this is, you know, the, the more we can do, the faster, well, not, speed is not the importance of our meetings, but getting information out and sharing our concerns with each other is really what it's about. And, um, you know, I, you, you generally catch more flies with honey than vinegar. So, let's just remember that aloha is written into our state constitution, and we are elected officials, so, um, you know, the way we comport ourselves. Of course, our, our, we've seen the general, you know, issues just in our society at large, but we don't need to follow that. Uh, we, you know, we could be, do the best that we can, and I think we do. We're, all of you are exemplary community members that have stood up, so thank you for standing up. And speaking of exemplary members of our community, our first responders are, you know, heroes for all of us. And I would like to invite the Honolulu Fire Department. Thank you so much for your patience, um, and for our Waikiki Station, if you would come and give us your report.
Approaching microphone now.
Good evening, my name is Kainoa Sato. I'm the captain at, on Engine Seven for the Third Platoon at Waikiki Fire Station. The statistics provided below represent confirmed numbers of incidences in the Neighborhood Board's geographical area for the previous month. For the statist- statistics of June 2023, there was one structure fire, three wildland brush fires, one nuisance fire, and three activated alarms with no fires. For emergencies, we had seventy medical emergencies, three motor vehicle crash collisions, three mountain rescues, and one hazardous materials incident. Our safety tip of the month is grilling safety. Keep these tips in mind as you enjoy summer events and activities with family and friends. Always use barbecue grills outside, away from doors, windows, vents, and other building openings. Place the grill well away from side siding and deck railings, and out of, from under eaves and overhanging branches according to the manufacturer's instructions. Keep children and pets at least three feet away from cooking areas and keep starter fluid, lighters, and matches out of children's reach. Cook with caution, be alert, and stay at the grill while cooking. Never leave a hot barbecue unattended. Light a propane, propane grill only with the cover open. If the flame on the propane grill goes out, turn the grill and gas off, wait at least five minutes before reigniting. Periodically remove grease and fat, or fat buildup in the trays below the grill, so it cannot be ignited by a hot grill. Let the coals completely cool before disposing in a metal container. Never empty coals directly in a trash can. Do not store or use a grill on a porch or balcony, including any porch or balcony on an upper level of the building. Always store propane gas tanks outside of buildings and garages. Remember to properly inspect and maintain the tank fittings and tubing according to the manufacturer's instructions. Vapors leaked indoors can easily be ignited by pilot lights or electrical equipment, causing an explosion. Should you have any questions, please email HFD's Community Relations Office at hfdnhb@Honolulu.gov. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there questions for our Honolulu Fire Department? Noella? Uh, no, no underground question, okay?
Uh, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, um, thank you, uh, Fire Department. Uh, my question is, now that we are in hurricane season and we have, um, approaching storms, the people of Hawaii, um, rely on the Fire Department and the Police Department and the other agencies. And in this particular district, uh, due to the fact that we're very close to the coastline, um, is the Honolulu Fire Department, are you folks gearing up? Are you folks preparing? La da, and, um, um, are we ready as a community? Um, you guys help us so that we can take care of this stuff. So, that's my question tonight. What is Honolulu Fire Department's preparation as we are, we do have an approaching storm? Um, it's not going to be a hurricane, according to the weather. However, it is going to be a weather event. And with that said, I await your response, sir. Thank you very, very, very much.
Thank you. Your question is, yes, we are prepared.
Okay, and I think we've all gotten notices of how to prepare ourselves and get supplies and all of that. Um, hopefully to make your jobs easier when it does hit, if and when it does hit. Are there other questions for our Fire Department? Thank you very much, sir, for your forbearance tonight also. We hope to get to you earlier at next meetings. Um, Honolulu Police Department, District Six, Waikiki Cop Violani Park.
What are you guys gonna do, all right? It's me again.
Hi, good evening. So Lieutenant Toma from District Six. So our monthly stats for June, we had four robberies from the previous, four for the previous month. We've had twelve burglaries, we had twelve per, twelve burglaries from the previous month. Thefts, we had a hundred and seventy-one, and the previous month of a hundred and seventy. Uh, U M Vs, we had fourteen from the previous month of seventeen. Assaults, thirty-nine, previous month was twenty-five. Uh, sex crimes, six, previous month was four. Uh, bicycle skateboard violations, twenty-nine, the previous month was thirty-three. For speeding, thirteen citations were issued from the previous month of sixteen. We had a hundred and one thousand nine hundred sixty parking violations, previous month was two thousand three hundred eighty-three. Loud muffler citations issued, fifteen, previous month was thirty-one. Park closures, we had a hundred and twelve citations issued, fifteen arrests. The previous month was a hundred and thirty-three citations, eight arrests. Uh, for the month of June, we had five thousand three hundred and three calls for service from the previous month of five thousand two hundred and fifty-eight.
Okay, thank you very much. It's a lot of work you all have. Um, are there questions for District Six? Seeing none, thank you, sir, for coming out tonight. Let's move on to District Seven, Diamond Hiccupa, St. Louis Heights, East Honolulu. Mr. Nakamura?
Hi, aloha, Lieutenant Taro Nakamura with, um, District Seven. These are stats for June as compared to the previous month. Okay, so motor vehicle thefts, uh, were eight as compared to six. Burglaries went down to two as compared to seven. Thefts in general went down twenty-two as compared to twenty-five. And U M Vs, which is, uh, theft from autos, that went up seventeen as compared to five. This is out of protocols for service of six thousand five hundred and thirty-seven for the district. For this statistical information can be found at HonoluluPD.org. And, um, actually, good timing, um, in regards to the, to the last question to H, S, F D. But our safety tip for the month is, um, I wanted to try to find some new information, different information to give to the Neighborhood Board. So, I found this on the FEMA website, but it's a, um, and I sent it to, um, your Chair, um, your previous Chair for dispersal. But it's, uh, you can also find it on the FEMA website. It's a creating a family emergency communication plan. So, um, they advise writing down critical information such as, uh, phone numbers and addresses for your family members, um, and doctors, schools, things like that. Make sure everybody in your family has the same information, and then, um, practice emergency plans. So, depending on what kind of emergency situation, do you know where you're gonna have your meeting, your emergency meeting place, things like that? And then, I think, um, one of the biggest things that I, I took out of reading this is that, um, we get so used to, um, technology and we have everything on our, we have our whole lives on our cellphones these days. But how many of us can even remember what, uh, your daughter or your, your son, or your, you know, your father or your mother's, uh, actual phone number is? So, in the event that your cellphone goes down, hey, do you have it written somewhere else that, uh, you can, can have access to? And, uh, so it can help refresh your memory. Um, just simple things like that. So, um, it's, it's something interesting that I think you might, you folks might, um, be interested in. And if I can add one more thing, um, in response to that hurricane, the, the hurricane that might be coming, hopefully not, hopefully not. But, um, the H and L dot info is a good website, and you go to Department of Emergency Management, it can tell you things like the, um, the flood inundation zones in and around, especially the flatter parts around Waikiki and Kapahulu. Um, things like that. So, um, it is, it is a good place to go and, um, to play around. You can put, input your own address and see what level of flood inundation zone you're in. So, that's another suggestion. Sorry, went up past two minutes or whatever.
No, no, thank you, uh, Officer Nakamura. And we did have a question for you in the chat, which was, uh, I think for you and also for Officer Toma, which is, does, uh, HPD report and count loud mufflers as with the prior HPD District? Um, I'm not sure, uh, prior reporting, maybe we used to do that?
Yeah, so, you know, this, this is very interesting. This, these monthly statistics, um, i- i- that becomes a question from time to time. And, and if you've noticed, District Six reports different information than us. that becomes a question from time to time. And if you've noticed, District Six reports different information than us. So District Seven, we only report the four categories that were agreed upon between the Honolulu Police Department and the Neighborhood Board Commission. So that's the reason why we're, we do that. And I believe the majority of the districts do that. That being said, it's, it's up to the commanders of each district to do what they, they, you know, if they decide to do something different, that's, that would be up to the district commander. But the way D Seven operates is we, we will report these statistics as agreed upon with the Neighborhood Board.
I think there's probably enough interest in our board just to have that because it's so obnoxious. And I don't know if we could include that going forward or not. But if we can, maybe you can compile that. Margaret?
Yeah, I attended the Waikiki Neighborhood Board and it was all about noise and in particular loud mufflers. And the police, you know, fortunately or unfortunately, were really taking the task over the noise. They had said, you know, one of the reasons that they couldn't cite the motorcycles was because Harley-Davidsons are issued with loud mufflers. And so they couldn't tell the difference between Harley-Davidsons and normal other bikes, which was really kind of shot down by the whole board. And also too, and we, I mean, it's so easy. You hear them coming miles away. But also too, I asked before, and I know it's kind of weird, but if on the sex crimes stuff, can you break that down and let us know what neighborhoods that's happening in or, you know, approximate area? Because it's
Again, again, that's, that's part of the reason why we only give stats that have been agreed upon between the department and the Neighborhood Board Commission. Something sensitive like sex crimes, for example. The way the computer might spit out a number six or whatever for that month, it might not have anything to do with your Neighborhood Board area. It might have been that it was just reported from that area. So that's the, how can I say it correctly? That's a danger of statistics, I guess. You can boost them up, boost them down. Like, for example, I, District Seven encompasses everything from Punahou all the way out to Makapu. So it would be unfair for me to report sex crime statistics for District Seven to this board because we have Kapua Lani Hospital in our, in my district. And that takes the great majority of sex crimes cases for the island. But none of them could have occurred in the area that Neighborhood Board Number Five encompasses. So those are the the hidden issues, I guess we can put it, with something like that. That being said, if you want to play with the honolupd.org website, you can search by area.
Okay, one of the, but just the major thing that I noticed that the Neighborhood Board was that the noise, that was a whole presentation. And they were kind, and you folks were kind of taken a task for always having excuses for not, you know, enforcing laws that are on the books. And I mean, I'm not calling you on it, but it was just, it was interesting to hear and the prosecutors were there too. And they need to all work together to get rid of these loud mufflers and racers and everybody else. Major blaps there. Who testifies against every noise builder is.
Okay, well, I, yeah, it is a big concern. So maybe we can focus on that as time goes by. I mean, it's a larger question for the City Council, I think, as well. Let's move to Noella and then Dan.
Aloha Lieutenant Nakamura. Thank you so much for reminding us to remember and memorize phone numbers. I'm doing that now myself. I miss the phone. Anyway, aside from that, moving forward, a big problem down at Makalei Beach Park again. Some of my neighbors have been telling me that there's a guy that comes down in his hammock and he's been down there at the beach. I don't know if you're familiar with this, but it's a concern for the community because that seems to be the big hotspot for the young ladies and men. And I would just ask, with all due respect, I understand that you're very, very taxed for personnel. But nevertheless, I think that we're all doing a great job of seeing something, saying something, talking to you folks about it. But you guys got to keep a real sharp eye on that beach. My biggest concern, and I have spoken to the DLNR about this, is that due to the fact that social media has made this the hotspot for the young adults. But we have Rocky, Kaevi, Kaimana, all the seals. They like to go to that beach. And I don't mean to sound frivolous, but that's also another component to the use of Makalei Beach Park. It's a beautiful place, but there's some funky stuff going on. And I hope that you guys can, you know, help us out down here in the community. And with that said, mahalo for your time.
Oh, thank you for your support. Actually, in regards to Makalei, I, I've been working the last couple of days. So we did, I do remember some calls for a lot of juveniles congregating in that park. So we did clear them out. So whenever, the easiest way to do it would be whenever you, if you see a crime occurring, just call nine one one and we'll go down and address the situation.
Yeah, but a lot of times I don't. I hear this from the neighbors, people that go down there. We're all doing our life. You know, and, you know, we've been dealing with Mr. Cruckey in the mayor's office on the speeding problem. We're all aware of this, Lieutenant Nakamura. And, and yeah, we're in this together. But I think that it's when we got a guy down there doing nasty things in front of anybody that goes down there, that, that's, that to me kind of raises the bar a wee bit with all due respect.
Sure. If you, if you see something, just call nine one one and we'll address the situation.
Do you think you can have a little bit more patrol down there when able?
Yeah, of course. If we get calls, if we get more calls to a particular area, it's in their office's best interest to stay in that area.
Yeah, but if they're driving by, they can pull up on the sidewalk and just meander down there at random times because these, these incidences happen at random times and their problem.
The thing about, if, without getting into specific people, if you, the thing about like indecent exposure type cases or things like that, you have to remember that the Police Department, we always do need a complainant to, to arrest for some, somebody or something like that unless we see it on view. So that's the reason why I always recommend.
There's signs down there. Apparently, some of the younger women have been, you know, exposed to this sort of thing. And some of them were so brave and they put signs up on the wall there. You know, watch out for this guy.
We actually made a couple of arrests down in Kui Lake Cliffs. But the key point is, we need, we need cooperation from the, and from people who are willing to make a complaint, to make an arrest.
Got it.
Yeah, thank you.
But thank you, Noel and Officer Nakamura. And I think Dan has a question as well.
Hi Lieutenant. Yeah, just the main concern here is Date Street. I think you're familiar. There was a pretty big accident a few days ago. And Date Street's notorious for racing at two, three in the morning. And as you know, there's pedestrians walking right on that sidewalk and there's people doing a hundred miles an hour on Date Street. I just had a question for you. Is, is there a reason why Date Street isn't enforced as far as speeding?
No, Date Street's a public roadway. It has, I think that's thirty-five over there.
Correct.
But what I can do is I can definitely let the Midnight Watch guys know and
I'd appreciate, yeah, I'd appreciate that. Just there's
Between like two thirty and what time?
Yeah, but before, you know, there's just, and, and there's a lot of, there's just racers out there, you know, and there's loud mufflers, but when they get into an accident, I mean, it could hurt someone. I mean, you know, residents live right on Date Street. So I would just, I just wanted to put a word out to HPD that Date Street is a dangerous place for pedestrians. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll pass on the information.
Thank you, Dan. And I think that's maybe something you all can bring up with Margaret's Public Safety and Traffic Committee. There's a lot of issues around the whole area of speeding and all of that. So I appreciate you officers for you coming tonight and we look forward to you coming next month. And thank you for all you do for our community. Next, we're going to move on to Community Concerns Public Testimony and to help. I'm sorry, Mr. James, did you have a question?
It was on the next area. I'll wait. Thank you.
Okay, so to help with our, you know, keeping to time, Arlene Velasco will be our timekeeper. So she'll set a, an iPhone for her phone for one minute and forty-five seconds. When the alarm goes off, please wrap up your comments. I know that there's a lot of passionate issues about everything, but to be fair to everybody, we will do the best we can with this. So thank you, Arlene, for, for that. And yes, Mr. James, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, and I'll try to be within a minute. My, and Board members, thank you for entertaining me. My name is Jack James. I head the organization called Honolulu Seven Recall. We were formed as a result of the pay increase for the City Council members and are dedicated to the proposition of recalling seven of the nine council members. The reason I'm here tonight is just to introduce myself. We're going to be very active in your area. We want to be good neighbors. We will be good neighbors. And I will be sending your chair the contact information for myself. We will have someone at every one of your meetings. And we want you to reach out to us if you have any concerns about our activity in the Diamond Head area. That's the purpose of our visit this evening, but we're going to be at this for the next twelve to fourteen months. So we will be active in your area.
Okay, thank you, Mr. James. And Christopher Salas? I, you have a longer name that I can't read.
That's all good. We're in Community Concerns right now, right?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to bring up the Honolulu Century Ride. It's happening September twenty-fourth. It starts and ends at Kapua Lani Park and heads out along the South Shore, West and Windward Side. But yeah, we're expecting around thirteen hundred riders. I'll put some, if anyone wants more information, I'll put it in chat. And yeah, just wanted to announce that.
And when is that, when is that going to take place?
Oh, sorry, September twenty-fourth.
Okay, and will the streets shut down?
Uh, yeah. Streets, Moncroft and Pocky will be closed for like an hour in the morning from six thirty to seven thirty. But other than that, no other streets will be closed down. But there will be police out there helping direct traffic and cyclists. It's not a race, it's a ride. So there's, everyone is instructed to follow the rules and the laws.
Okay, okay. Well, we really appreciate you coming far in advance to give folks an update on this and we hope everyone has a safe, enjoyable ride.
Thank you.
Okay, and that is over in the chat for that.
Mr. Chair, I do have my hand up.
I don't see you, Linda, but go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to talk to the man about the race and ask when the, when all the bicycles, we've done with the streets. And we used to ask about the parades that, you know, don't schedule a run or whatever if there's already something in the evening. So at the most, you know, try to make only one thing a day and not take up the morning and evening part service. Thank you.
Of course. The most of you'll see will be done before one P M. We instruct everyone to be off the road by five. We do have a SAG wagon that will come by and pick up riders that are still out on the road at five. But since it is a long distance and everyone kind of chooses their own distance to ride, people will be coming through sporadically throughout the day. You'll only see large group of riders in the morning when it first starts.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then also, if I may add, this year we're planning on live entertainment at the park as well. We have two bands and some Hula performers. If you wish to come down and just witness that and not ride. What was that? That will be going on from ten A M. to four P M.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you very much. And Daisy? See, you've got your hand up, Daisy. Are you there?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you and congratulations to all officers. You know that Kui Lake Place is not the only affordable area in your area. Guess what? We have another one called Bahua. It was at the Neighborhood Board of Makali Muri Edi Edi last week and it's called, I'm sorry. It's Bahua Ridge. It's right by where you try to get onto the freeway from U H, you know, that cutoff from U H parking lot going to Baritania or to the freeway. It's going to be a twenty-eight story of federal rental, which is, and two hundred eighty-one units. But it could be like six hundred people perhaps. But there's another Kui Lake Place coming up. Just to let you know, it's going to affect all of us to trying to go on to Wai La Avenue to get to the freeway or Baritania Street. And I'm sure traffic study may not be impacted as they, as you really, as it really should be, but it is a big concern. So I asked if they could also come to our neighborhood, your Neighborhood Board and to Manoa and U H to let them know. And guess what? Don't forget Waikiki because all the traffic comes all the way to Waikiki to Kapua Hula Avenue, Wai La Avenue to go down. So everybody's impacted. So I can give you information to who this group is that's doing it. It's a good idea, but I think twenty-eight stories is a little bit too big for this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Daisy. If you, if you're able to, can you put that in the chat if you have the option to do that?
Yes, that's the one on Wai La Avenue. Thank you.
Okay, and let's see, are there others who have community concerns at this time? Seeing none, we will move on to the Mayor's Rep who said he was here and then had to go, which is understandable. We're very lucky to have Mr. Cruckey as our Mayor's Rep. Mr. Owaya, I see your hand up.
Yeah, actually, I have a concern.
Go ahead.
Yeah, the Campbell, Campbell Ave, Kapua Hula area. And I was just wondering like, if anybody who lives in the area knows that the speeding and we talked about speeding and the loud motorcycles and coming down this main road, we always get these like very dangerous cars coming through very fast. It's a residential area. We have families that live around here. And I just living over here, I witnessed so many accidents within the past year and a half because of the, you know, there's a lot of, the side streets have stop signs and a lot of cars, they don't, I don't know if they don't, if they're not familiar with the area, they don't realize there's stop signs or what, but there's a lot of cars that just flow right out without stopping. And then you have guys coming down Campbell Ave speeding all the time. So, I mean, this is, it's just, you know, kind of inevitable that there's so much accidents because of, you got cars flying up and down the main road and then guys coming down the side roads not stopping. I'm just wondering if there's anything that we could do about it, like maybe possibly adding some speed humps, I think would be really good on Campbell Avenue. Or if you guys have any other suggestions, but it's kind of one of my biggest concern and why I'm here.
Okay, well, yes, and thank you for coming out tonight and expressing those concerns. I am in the neighborhood and people drive like maniacs. And I think this is a really good topic to be referred to Margaret's Committee on Public Safety and Traffic. And I, I, I've, yeah. yeah, the entire speed limit needs to be lowered for our neighborhood. Um I was in a western city recently. It was se- eighteen miles an hour in residential zones, eighteen because you see it. And that makes you aware of how fast you're actually going. So uh maybe uh Margaret, I don't know if you could put your um information on how to get ahold of you in there, and maybe you and Mr. Owaya could um work together on this as well as other issues like with with Dan on on the Date Street issue. Um and maybe we could I don't know, I'd be happy for our district to become a pilot in speed reduction uh across the board.
That would be awesome. Yeah, yeah, I see those speed humps like on Kalii Street, uh and I noticed that there's no way you can speed when you have those things on the road. I think I think it would be a great solution, but yeah, yeah, it would uh that'd be great to get with Margaret and we could talk about it.
Okay, yeah, and they're easier easier said than done, but you know, they're all over the city, so yes, sir. Is that Bruce?
Yeah, you know, I just have one comment. I commented about this before. Speed humps work. Uh I visited a relative on Maui and throughout the whole subdivision on the West Maui Mountains, every road had speed humps. And so you can't speed when you got speed humps. So and like he mentioned that um on Kalii Street in front of Kalakaua Intermediate, there used to be a speedway, but once they put speed humps in there, everybody has to slow down. So speed humps work. But the city just needs to put money into it and put it where they need to put it. That's my opinion, so.
Yeah, they're very reticent to do that, but uh it's a good topic and a perennial topic. So Mr. Owaya, I think Margaret will send you uh maybe in the chat, or if you're online, how to contact her. Um I see a hand here for Dylan. Um maybe someone in public, is there Dylan to?
Uh so this one's actually just for me. Um so uh Mr. Owaya, I will put this in the report um that the mayor's rep usually does while he's absent. I can take any questions. Um and I'll take them back. So this will be directed to the Department of Transportation Services. Um I believe Campbell Ave is a city road, um but in my experience with all the other boards that I've had speed humps inserted into their neighborhoods, um they have been a state effort. So I'm not sure if they're going to collaborate, um but just be aware of that. So I'll put that in the report. We'll get back to you. I wanted to make one more comp that while the mayor's rep is able to right now, um we did have several um concerns, uh sorry, responses to questions raised at the previous meeting. We'll turn to a memo and we'll get that posted to its Google Drive, which is public for everybody to view. You'll notice that the link to the Google Drive is on the backside of our agenda under announcements. Um so please check that periodically throughout every month. We continuously post everything related to the meetings. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, and I'll put that over in the chat. Um it 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 wasn't hyperlinked exactly, but um this time, but in the future, that's where our everything is 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 living for this uh board. I don't see any. Linda, do you have your hand up?
Yes, I do. I was just gonna say, since um Campbell Avenue has all blind streets, um the corners are. Uh I would prefer to lower the speed limit rather than speed humps. And if anybody knows where some speed humps I can go look at, I would like to do that and see how tall they are and how the ride over them are. Thank you.
Okay, I I would suggest then you guys work together with Margaret on a on some solutions, and just like Leah, he happened.
Yeah, okay.
Now, we were able to get that through. So lot and that's a lot of work. It's a long haul. Don't expect answers overnight. Okay, then I I think Kathleen is here uh from the.
Yes, I am. Thank you, Chair. Congratulations to you and the rest of the board members. So first of all, uh we had two main breaks in your community. Most of you are very aware, the ugly one we had on June eighteenth on Harding Avenue. We do apologize. It has been repaired. Uh but it was a particularly um long one to repair. It was a lot of other infrastructure in the roadway, which sometimes makes it difficult, but not surprising given the location. We also had another one on Leahi Avenue, an eight inch. We want to, we're happy to announce that our annual Unthirsty Plant Sale is coming back live on Saturday, August fifth. If you're into zero escaping, uh please come out. We have lots of vendors there selling uh low water plants, and we highly recommend if you do have a yard to uh keep it uh in Hawaii native plants, which use very little water. Uh one other thing I wanted to share, uh Dylan, do I have sharing capabilities here?
Yes, you should see him on the bottom of your screen.
Okay, great. Thank you. We do have a construction project that will be coming up. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Our Diamond Head Water System Improvement Project Part Three will be coming up. And this will be a a part of on Twenty-second Avenue down to Puu Panini Avenue over to Palikawa and then up to a little bit of Hakaka Street. The contract was um awarded on May thirtieth. Our potential notice to proceed is August twenty-eighth, and that just means that the contractor should have received all of their permits, and they can get started planning for construction. That does not necessarily mean the construction will start that. The completion date, uh it's a three hundred and sixty-day contract duration. Completion date is scheduled for August twenty twenty-four, and the contract amount is just over two million dollars. And we will be installing approximately four hundred and seventy feet of four inch, six eight and inch, eight inch water mains along the streets I just mentioned that are being shown right now. We will be coordinating with the Variety School of Hawaii to ensure that we're not negatively impacting them. If there are any questions, uh I'm happy to take them. And then one final thing, just to let everybody know that the Diamond Head Fencing Project is still moving forward. We're currently awaiting the executed construction contract, and as soon as we get that, I will uh share that information with board, because I know there's a strong interest on that. Uh are there any questions?
Mahalo, Kathleen.
You're welcome, board member.
Quick question, Kathleen, on the update on the fencing um uh uh camouflage fencing around the um the water tank on Diamond Head?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm just wondering a- any update on the timetable or any of that?
Uh no, as soon as I get the contract, I know that the contract has been executed. I I will get a schedule for you guys.
Okay, very good. Are there any other questions?
That's the next step.
Daisy, you may have a question?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Kathleen. The water of water supply did a terrific job on taking care of the Market City um water main break and also big mahalo to Kuhio Avenue. It took four days, but it's dry now. Thank you so much.
You're welcome, ma'am. I saw pictures of the Kuhio break, and it was one of the ugliest breaks I've ever seen. Uh there was an old abandoned sewer main uh conduits for electrical, for uh telecommunications. It was pretty bad, and it that's why it took us so long to repair. So again, we do apologize, and we appreciate the community's patience.
Okay, and I see maybe someone in person, Dylan?
Yes, we do have member Arlene and member Angie after.
Um yes, hi Kathleen. Thank you so much for coming. Um I just wanted to ask if you have an update on the Red Hill situation?
Well, uh pretty much this, nothing's really changed. As you saw, they finished the repairs. They're getting started on the refueling on uh uh one section. Uh we were very fortunate. We spent the afternoon with the Assistant Secretary of the Navy, Meredith Berger, and our rear Admiral John Stephen Barnett. Uh we actually took them out to our Waheha Tunnel on a tour. And we think they were, we hope and we believe that they were understanding of our passion and our concern for our water resources. Uh they were very grateful for the tour. If you've never been on our tour, it's it's pretty impactful to anybody who's never taken it. It's it's a pretty good tour. Happy to take anybody out that would like to go. They are going to be setting up a community group. Uh the scoping meeting is at the end of this month on the twenty-seventh of July. And for input, and as soon as I get more information on that, that I will share that with you, but uh they seem to be sticking to their timetable, and they seem to be moving along. We continue to keep pressuring and uh expressing our concerns wherever we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Um is there any update on the PFAS situation?
With. Uh we continue to monitor our wells. We have had eight hits all well below what the EPA is, we believe is going to put in at four parts per trillion for PFOS. Uh and we keep monitoring, and sometimes when we go back, we don't detect anything. We had that just happen recently at another uh well that we had detected it and that we hadn't detected it. But we will continue monitoring.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi Kathleen, thank you so much for your presentation. Um I did have a question. Um just because I remember when we had the Harding Main Break, and I think my apartment complex, we are out of water for eighteen or nineteen hours. Um and I kind of only found out because of my neighbor, who was the one who said, did you see the water break? And I was like, who, what now? Um and that was, I believe, four hours into us not having water. So I was just curious. So whenever it was out on my end, I only was able to get news from Twitter about when, how the break was being worked on, and I understand it takes a lot of time, but I was just curious in those situations, what are your ways of communicating? Um just.
Instagram, Facebook, we have a web, we have a map on our homepage of our website that I highly recommend that you check. Uh we update it frequently. Uh the news media does pick up all of our social media feeds, especially on something like that. In fact, they came out a couple of times. Uh you can always call us. You can call me directly if you ever have a concern at eight oh eight seven four eight five three one nine, but we're we're on social media, so Facebook, Instagram, Twitter and uh our website.
Okay, and with that, I also just, um for those who are maybe not so digital literate, is it ever on the radio by chance? I know it does when news stations want to pick up, but I just want to clarify where they can access that.
We we send everything out, and we do know that all the media channels monitor, and they do pick it up, but we can't we can't, there's nothing, we can't guarantee that the radio or TV will pick it up. They usually don't unless it's a big one like the Harding Avenue one. But we do put it out there. We do know they monitor it. We do know that the traffic are like Danielle Tucker is really, really good about it.
Yes, thank you. No, I watched her status updates often. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sure. Dylan, yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to address that one as well. Um there's that app, uh HNL Info, and I just recently downloaded myself, and so there was all the water main breaks are also posted on that, so you'll get the alert notification on your phone. I know that that doesn't help people if they're don't have a smartphone, but a lot of people do have access to that.
HNL, okay.
But I do need to tell you, we only use hnl.info in the event of a a large break like the Harding Break, and the reason being is Border Water Supply and the city and county are on two separate technology IT systems, and we occasionally run into problems with this with uh the cities when we do that kind of stuff. And so uh we do do it in the event of a very large main break. Usually that's anything that really messes up traffic. Uh that's our definition kind of of a large main break. So it could be a six-inch main break, and if it messes up traffic, we will use hnl.info. But thank you, Dylan, for bringing that to our attention.
Okay, um thank you, Kathleen. You're we just want to applaud your 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 excellent um public service and you're a role model to all us uh the folks who, you know, uh go into to public service. Um we appreciate you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful evening. Aloha.
Aloha. Uh next, we have KCC Kapialani Community College. I didn't see.
Yes, good evening. Uh my name is, my name is John Richards.
Oh, yes, thanks, Mr. Richards. Go ahead.
Certainly. And so I'm uh sitting in for Carol Hoschko, who has an event that she's attending this evening. Uh John Richards, I'm the Dean of Career and Technical Education at Kapialani Community College. And just some news updates. Our campus new chancellor, Misaki Takabashi, has been in place for almost four months, and so we're really getting back in to trying to bring full life back to our campus after COVID. Uh bringing more face-to-face people on campus, um more community engagement and support. So we're back in that mode now to fully support our community. The Culinary Institute of the Pacific update, we had a town hall, a quarterly town hall last week. It was very detailed and a couple of the highlights uh that we discussed. We will have one more quarterly in October before we open the campus for the first time ever. The full campus will be opening. So there's one more of these quarterly update construction status meetings. After we open, we will switch to a mode of more operational and informative of how we're going to be implementing the various things we do at Culinary Institute of the Pacific. Um the project completion is for the end of January two thousand twenty-four, so six months about when we will receive the certificate of occupancy for uh the entire facilities. We have an executive director search that is concluding, and we hope to have our Culinary Institute of the Pacific Executive Director in place uh by September first, two months. At which time, over the next between now and next August, we will be fully implementing our academic engagement programs, international, national enrollment campaigns. Uh our food and wine studio will be opening, uh developing the Hawaii Food Network. And of course, the restaurant, uh once we bring our director on, we'll be able to start to fully move on the restaurant concept and get that in place for probably an August or September two thousand twenty-four launch. Thank you.
Thank you, Professor Richards. Um we look forward to it opening. It looks like, and you may not know this level of detail, but it looks like the stone wall uh has taken over, has um is a, uh there was a big sort of a gash of concrete there, and it looks like it's been covered with um an appropriate rock face or something to blend in better with the with the mountain, but maybe we'll hear that at the quarterly update.
So in our last, pardon me, in our last quarterly update, that was addressed by several of the members who are on this board and attend our meetings and uh in our next quarterly meeting, they rearrange their construction schedules to be able to put that wall up sooner than later.
Oh, good. Thank you. Yes, I I typically do attend those, and I must have missed that that one meeting, but it I could see a difference uh already. So uh thank you for for coming tonight, and we look forward to a really spectacular um uh new campus down there.
My pleasure.
Any questions for Mr. Richards? Okay, thank you so much, sir. Uh next, we will move on to our new governor's representative, and I, Claudia, if you could tell us how to correctly pronounce your last name, um if you're here.
Chair, I did see her earlier, but I don't believe I see her now.
Okay, so we will pass that just as a time notification. We have about, we have over half an hour at this point. Um we have a couple of issues that we've sort of talked about before that maybe we can move through to get to our elected representatives. Um these are probably simpler than or they're not as difficult as they might be um as far as looking at them, but let's tackle them. Board business for discussion and action number one, or A is Kulei Place Development. Request for Honolulu City Council to reconsider approval of the Kulei Place Development citing sea level rise and infrastructure concerns. Uh Dylan, uh someone's got a hand up there?
Yes, uh so just a procedure, um a best practice, I think, uh to keep everything flowing smoothly. Um this agenda item was brought up by uh Vice Chair Velasco, so we should when we have agenda items under board business, I think the best procedure would be for that person who introduced it to give a brief explanation so the public is aware of exactly what the message is and the point. And then we can hear from the public, and then we will go back and look from a motion from the board. Robert's Rule states that we need a motion to actually have board discussion, but we always need to hear from the public, that sunshine law. So just to reiterate, brief explanation, public testimony, motion, and a second from the board, discussion from the board, and then we vote, and that'll keep things flowing smoothly. Thank you, um Vice Chair.
Yes, thank you. I brought this up because I was very concerned about the um sea level rise and the infrastructure concerns with regard to having a huge building. And if you look at the three-foot level that of the. of the map that UH has put out showing the inundation of the sea, the projection of it, it's very concerning and the, there's concern with traffic flow. There's going to be concern with traffic flow, sewage lines, uh, everything, electrical lines. There's, I, I am concerned that this has not been considered. And that's why I brought it up.
Okay, thank you, Arlene. Um, I know it's a contentious issue. Are there members of the public, is this correct, Dylan? Have members of the public who wish to weigh in on this?
Correct. Anybody in person? No one in person? So we'll look online. Seeing no one online, I would ask for a motion from the board to take any position on this subject. It could be general, vague.
Okay, I would like to, to have a motion that we um, vote on this as far as if we really want to ask the city council, can we ask the city council to reconsider?
Uh, yes. So your motion would be something like, uh, just like the agenda item states, um, you would say, I move uh, that we request the Honolulu City Council to reconsider approval of the Kool-Aid Place Development setting sea level rise and infrastructure concerns.
That is correct.
All right, is there a second? Decker seconds. Um, Chair, you can take over discussion from here.
Thank you. Uh, discussion Linda, you got your hand up?
Yes, I would just like um, the Arlene to add traffic to that, if that's possible at this point.
Yes, absolutely.
Uh, and I would like to, uh, uh, Noella, go ahead.
Um, I definitely think that we need to look at this. Thank you.
Uh, I would like to add, maybe you just do a sea level rise comma, infrastructure. Linda said, did you say traffic, Linda?
Yes, I did. And I'd like to know if um, Arlene plans to write a resolution to back herself up or our, ourselves up.
Um, well, we have a resolution on this already as far as the cooler place. I can, maybe we could just add, could we add to it? Maybe just an amendment?
Uh, I think a whole new resolution that talks about um, revisit it to go, hear it again, you know? Try to do something that changes what you've already done. Like, okay, the, the tenants, I think, and, and Kui Lake, they want to be repaid for the money, the, the extra money they're gonna have to pay for rent somewhere else.
So are you suggesting then perhaps that it reads something like citing sea level rise, comma, infrastructure concerns, comma, traffic uh, safety and other issues brought up in our previously passed neighborhood board resolution on Kui Lake Place?
I would like all, all that, but I, I would like to mention the people that were kicked out of the place so other people could live there. That's the main thing is uh, he, he, I, I would never want anyone to kick out people and then so, so people with more money could rent it at a higher rate. You know, that, that's just terrible to me. So I'd like that mentioned.
Okay, then I might suggest that, that Arlene, that we have this a sea level rise, infrastructure concerns at somewhere in their uh, traffic safety and displacement of existing residents in current affordable units as well as other issues brought up in our previously passed board resolution.
That's good.
Chair, could you repeat um, displacement of existing residents in existing affordable housing units?
Yes, and and other issues raised in our previously passed board resolution on Kui Lake Place in two thousand twenty-two.
All right, I'm writing all that down.
Margaret?
At the city council meeting yesterday, sorry, this is just really fast. It came up that existing tenants were threatened with the media, I watched it online. Were threatened with uh, the immediate eviction if they talk to the media or each other.
See, that's terrible.
I mean, they were, and it was in writing. And I know Amanda just wrote to me that um, nobody was being kicked out. That's not true. I mean, that's what that came up yesterday, that they had gotten letters from Kobayashi stating that if they even talk to each other about what was going on, that they would be kicked out immediately.
That should be illegal.
Well, and uh, thank you, Margaret. And some, and someone at Dylan, uh, is there someone there?
One, one other thing too, is they don't have to follow the federal regs about relocation because they're self-financed. And that's how they get around that.
Yes, um, Margaret, did, did, did anybody have a copy of the letter?
I, they probably did. I'm not sure. Amanda might be able to, goes out of Tommy Waters office, but that did come up that they were threatened in writing with immediate eviction. And like I said, because they're self-financed, they don't have to follow the regulations, the federal regulations for relocation.
So that's harassment of current tenants.
Well, and I think this is probably beyond our scope of determining what's legal and not legal depending on housing laws. And Amanda Zapata from Chair Waters' office was saying that um, she said, no one's being displaced by the prod, by the, by the project, but I think the people that live there that were testifying yesterday at the city council are absolutely being displaced by this project. They may not be being kicked out, but their buildings will be necessarily demolished for this project to take place. So um, I think we're on reasonable ground if this is the gist of what you're trying to get at, Arlene.
Um, yes, all of it. You know, it's, that project has many, many concerns associated with it.
Okay, and I see there's another hand up over live, uh, Dylan?
Uh, Decker, did you have your hand raised? Okay. Uh, that was an accident. Did anyone else here have a, you know? All right, uh, Chair, it seems like everyone's on the same page here. Um, is there any more discussion?
Then I would call for a vote.
All right, I'll repeat the agenda, the best, sorry, the motion the best way I can. Uh, so the motion on the table, move by Velasco, seconded by Decker, is to um, request that the Honolulu City Council uh, reconsider approval of the Kool-Aid Place Development citing the following reasons, sea level rise, infrastructure, traffic and safety concerns and other issues brought up previously um, in the board's uh, resolution uh, on Kool-Aid Place as well as the displacement of existing residents and existing affordable housing units. I will write this up better than the way I just said it, but if everyone's in agreement, that is the motion. All right. Alan. Beutel. Decker.
I.
Hasina.
Hi.
Knight.
I have a question, but I'm voting I. Um, the previous resolutions available on the Google Drive?
Uh, so resolutions when they're adopted, um, and they're finalized and signed by the chair, they'll be sent to our office and they will be posted on our website, um, which is Honolulu.gov.
Okay.
And so that is the official place for agendas. The Google Drive is an unofficial area for meeting materials. Draft resolutions are perfectly placed there, but official ones will be found on our website.
Just making sure, because I'm voting I for a resolution from the previous board.
Thank you. Mattson?
Hi, and I have uh, some information to provide. Uh, is this a resolution that we're going to be doing?
This is a motion.
Well, what's?
This is a motion tagging on to things that have already been adopted in the previous resolution.
I understand that, but i- is this, is this uh, to uh, to write a resolution or write a letter or how are you going to communicate this?
This will be in the minutes clearly bolded and any board member can send it to their council members as such and attach the previously adopted resolution. So is that an?
As a planning and zoning tier, I'm not sure that's the way it should be handled, but I will definitely vote yes on the present motion, but it really needs to be refined.
Thank you. Murchy.
Aye.
Velasco.
Aye.
Welch?
Aye.
Weitzel is absent. Uh, Bruce Wong?
Bruce? Okay, he's.
Linda Wong?
I'm gonna vote I, but strongly suggest that it be turned into a proper re- resolution. Not just um, a paragraph you can read with the letterhead and everything. Not just refer to our meeting.
That can be a future agenda item. I think this is a great start. Um, just for clarification, when we do votes, um, we have four members in person and I know that we have enough members online to make quorum, but when we do votes, please keep your camera on. That is one of the requirements to achieve quorum. Um, but the motion does pass with ten in favor. Thank you. We'll go to the next item.
Okay, and uh, maybe, uh, I, I don't know if we can ask you without any sort of motion to send that on to the city council members, the mayor and other elected officials that are listed in the bottom of the previous resolution, um, Dylan, is that possible without?
I can certainly help with that. Uh, the timing, yeah, I can make that maybe a priority before the minutes are finished. I can just get that part done. Um, so yeah, let's talk offline about it.
Okay, thank you, because I think that's what, what folks are getting at before we do an actual resolution, which we should probably have some more uh, specific wording specific up and in advance for the, the people uh, to read. Okay, next we have proposed Alaway, we're at eight thirty, it proposed Alaway Canal Project being advertised. I'm guessing this was Margaret? Would you like to explain this briefly?
It's just, it's the same thing with the gated, you know, um, the gated Alaway Canal, it was the old Royal Gardens that came up. It was always on off channels, the advertisements, but they've changed the name of it to Blue Alaway Canal. And they were advertising in the middle of the news on channel, I know for sure on channel KHON. Like, and they did have the old maps with uh, uh, residential development along it too. So I just think that it's, they're trying to make it look like it's a done deal. And I think it's probably right in that area that you complain about always, Winston, where they have the industrial stuff stored there.
Oh, yeah, I, it goes right through.
They're gonna do the development, they're probably, I'm thinking suspiciously that they're trying to make it look as bad as possible so that people will go for it. But it is, I mean, I know it's kooky. But the fact that they're advertising in the middle of, you know, legitimate news is a little spooky.
Well, yeah, I, I, I saw it. It goes right through the zoo and, and other things. I, I don't know how realistic this is. So what is it that you'd like us to discuss or have action on, on this?
I guess just to say that it was not approved by, I guess, the um, Army Corps of Engineers and it, it's not it's not real. So the people don't think that it's happening. I don't know. I'm just, I just, I was so shocked to hear it on the news. That I thought that it should be brought up because I know, I think Daisy brought it up quite a few times before and we just kind of ignored it, but that was when it was the Royal Gardens. So just, anyway.
Okay, and there's someone live, uh, Dylan, who's there, wants to speak?
Yeah, Chair, now that we've had the introduction to the item, I think it'll be time to open it up for any public testimony and then I'll ask for a specific um, motion. I know that it's on the proposed Alaway, but maybe also including that um, Royal Waikiki Gardens verbiage in there. But let's do public testimony.
Thank you. Are there any folks who would like to testify on this in person or online? Board members?
I have a couple of comments.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, the Royal Hawaiian Gardens was a luxury development proposed for the Alaway Golf Course, which is state public land. It is also zoned preservation land, green open space. This developer is an offshore developer and he's promoting his ideas, trying to get people to buy into them. He's now changed his uh, do, his uh, he's switched canoes now and gone into another Blue Alaway Canal uh, proposal where he has proposed Alaway Canal being extended through Kapilani Park, which is of course trust land and dedicated to the people in perpetuity as a park. Uh, the, he has hired an architect to uh, design big, tall buildings along this uh, second arm of the canal going through Kapilani Park. This is totally illegal. He does not know what the protective laws are. He's just spending all his money trying to get people to buy into these ideas. And the Army Corps of Engineers totally denied this idea. They had it on a list of possibilities just for the canal, not for any uh, high-rise development. Uh, and uh, that, they took that off the list. So it, it, it's a non-issue. But he's putting his own ads on TV. It showed up on the news as Margaret said, so just an FYI uh, about how, how this is um, not being handled correctly. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, someone live there, Dylan?
Uh, no, just looking for a motion now, um, rather than going into discussion from the board and then a motion with more discussion. Let's get to a motion.
Yeah, thank you for the gentle reminder. Do we have a motion? Or is this just a ba- basic awareness that we're looking at?
Basic awareness.
Okay, well, I suggest we keep it on the agenda and uh, let's, you know, as if, if there's anything that's that would become of this, I mean, right away to Planning and Zoning Committee, um, Ms. Wong. You're on mute, Linda. You're on mute, Linda.
Oh, sorry. Um, can we some, is it legal for us to write a letter to this, the, these people and tell them um, that, the things that we've mentioned during our discussion? I did talk to uh, Mike, um, the uh, oh, he's the managing director when the last thing came up, when they, before they switched canoes. And uh, he just said that, no, uh, that's not happening and that's just all rhetoric. So.
For me.
Yeah, for me. Thank you. So um, if, if we could, from the board, if we could write a letter that says, we suggest you don't say that anymore because it's not, it can't be accurate. Can we do that? I would like, that's my motion to do that.
Uh, someone live, uh, in person, Dylan?
No, just a comment if I can make or advice.
Yep.
Yeah, so uh, maybe best practice wouldn't be to make a motion now to write a letter, but maybe draft a letter and bring it to the board at a next meeting or a future meeting, then we can have the discussion. I would advise, uh, and not warn the board, but uh, be careful sending letters to private parties about private business. Um, there's just some legal matters involved, so we don't want the board to be liable for anything. Um, one thing that the board can always do is send letters to departments, agencies, businesses, asking for information. Not demanding or requesting that they do certain things, but really just trying to work with them and get some more information and then provide a point.
Okay.
All right.
That's good.
Thank you, Dylan. Then if there's no other discussion on this point, um, I suggest we move on to our elected officials, Tommy Waters' office. Amanda? If you're still with us?
Hello, everyone. Yes, good evening. Um, putting all of our information in the chat right now, our district uh, newsletter for July, as well as some other important information. A, a couple of things I do want to highlight. Um, I don't know if you've already heard about the proposed outdoor court rules change, changes from Department of Parks and Recreation. That's been um, kind of going on. There, um, the draft rules have come out. Um, I left the link in the chat. There's a final survey um, being conducted online. It's open until July twenty-first at four thirty PM. So we really want There's a final survey um being conducted online. It's open until July twenty first at four thirty PM, so we really wanna get the word out and have folks take a look at those draft rules and provide any comments um or feedback to the survey. Um, and then, I know we've talked a lot about budget lately and real property tax. Excuse me. There are two um additional items I just wanted to highlight. More information in the newsletter for those who are interested. Those thirty-seven and forty were passed. Um, and that's, that's a significant um savings to the taxpayers for both the homeowners and the Kupuna exemptions. Uh, both were increased by twenty thousand dollars each, so the homeowner's exemption went from a hundred thousand to a hundred and twenty thousand, and the Kupuna from one forty to one sixty. Also, um, if you have heard about the tax credit or the tax rebate available, um, it used to be for those with income less than sixty thousand, and it was increased to eighty thousand. Um, so again, for folks who make um eighty thousand dollars or less, you can apply for this tax credit, and it essentially caps your taxes at three percent. Um, so definitely wanna take advantage of that for those who qualify. Um, I know we're short on time, so I'll leave it at that, and I'll take back any questions if there are any. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. And I I think maybe uh next time, if you can bring that tax information, put it in the chat or send it out, and it may already have been in uh council members' uh note to us, but it's just something for people to have, because taxes aren't due right now, but they'll be coming up.
Yes, I did. I included it in the chat as well. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Councilmember Waters' office?
I have one, but I can't.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Um, can, is a council member, uh, Tommy, is he amenable to making some kind of way to re- uh reimburse the tenants at Kool-Aid Place?
Uh, to be honest, I I don't know. I don't even know if that's a possibility. I really don't know, but I I can certainly take that back.
Yeah, will will you ask? Because that's what they want at this point, I've heard, uh, that they wanna be compensated for the more rent they're gonna have to pay anywhere else.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And uh, K E Shi, I'm not sure who that is?
Yes, thank you. Um, I would would like to please ask Council um Chair Waters if he could please respond to the Neighborhood Board's resolution about Kool-Aid Place and this um motion that was presented, that was voted on tonight.
Okay, sure. Thank you.
I see someone there, Dylan?
Yes, a member of Velasco.
Yes, and my um question was just very similar to the previous woman's remarks. I want, I know that Tommy voted for the Kool-Aid Place um development, and I would really like to know his position about reconsidering that, his approval of that development.
Okay, I I don't think it's legally possible, um, but I don't know for sure. I will take it back to him. I will ask him for a response. I believe Councilmember Say is here, and he could probably speak on that um better than I can, but I'll take that back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Margaret?
One thing that was brought up at the Waikiki meeting too, that Tommy uh noted was with regard to parades and block parties on Kalakaua, that they've almost, that they've almost reached their limit. And one of the uh board members there had suggested that maybe some of these questionable parades or block parties, they should have to pay to have police or uh police direct traffic, not come out of the public.
Mm-hmm.
You know, taxpayers' funds and, and and really, I mean, some of them are are definitely frivolous, and they've actually almost reached their limit with the, I can't remember what it's called, the.
The parade law.
What are they called? The the ones that are legitimate?
The legacy parades?
Yes, legacy parades, which they have to have. And I think that they've almost every single weekend closed off, you know, uh Kalakaua, which affects all of our traffic. The businesses are complaining about it. And I know that I personally have been stuck in traffic at the other end at the Hilton, and I've had, you know, been stuck at the, the Diamond Head End as well in traffic, and there's no one there to direct traffic, and that is kind of ridiculous, and we should not, the taxpayers shouldn't have to pay to, you know, pay police to direct traffic for these things, especially some of the questionable ones, because I know that at one point there was a uh, a lottery, and I'm not sure that that's still going on, but there was actually a guy that had gamed the system and uh won most of the lotteries, I think it was during Caldwell's administration. And uh, it needs to really, you know, people need to pay attention to that. We don't need to pay ourselves, but traffic has been a nightmare.
Thank you, Margaret.
Thank you, Margaret. Yeah, we we definitely agree with you. Um, we share the same concerns. This is something that we've actually um been tr- been tracking as far as the the uh the approvals and the the pending applications. There are sixteen, um, excuse me, fourteen legacy events. I know for twenty twenty-three, um, twelve of those legacy events have been approved. I didn't see the other last two on the the calendar for twenty twenty-three. Uh, we're definitely concerned about the excessive number. Chair Waters is actually meeting with DTS Director Morton um tomorrow about this, and so we definitely look forward to sharing more about it.
Okay, thank you. And Linda, briefly, I know you've already.
Can, uh, can you tell us when the parade law comes up? Uh, it's been amended several times throughout the years. So if we know when they're making the law, we can circumvent some of these things.
Absolutely. I think it was last amended in twenty nineteen, which is what we're currently looking at, and absolutely, uh, um, we definitely intend on sharing it widely when we do come up with an amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Couple of questions for you in the sidebar there chat about a town hall with Chair Waters. Ms. Ishi asked if we could do that. Um, so maybe you can take that back, especially about Kool-Aid Place to Chair Waters. I also had a very quick request, which is that the city council, if that's what it takes, work to remove the dreadful eyesore on Kop- uh, Kapahulu across from the library that has been a staging ground for years. It does not need to be there. It is an eyesore. It's a disgrace, and it needs to go. Um, thank you.
Sure, I'll take that back as well. Yeah, I I know that was, I recall that was supposed to be very temporary, and it's still there.
It's, it's been, uh, probably a decade.
Oh, my goodness, okay.
Okay, and uh, Ms. Mattson?
Yeah, I just, I just heard uh a very good idea that uh, that our council member call a town hall meeting on Kool-Aid Tower. The city council testimony yesterday was dynamic. It was very impressive. And a town hall is really needed right now. There are so many people, and they haven't been offered that opportunity by the city council, by the zoning committee, or anywhere else. I think it would be the best thing we could do for this community.
Thank you. Yeah, and.
Is there a way to make a motion on that?
Um, Dylan, are we, is it our right to do that?
I don't believe it's in order, because motions should be properly placed on the agenda, anything that the board is acting on, because the whole point is for the public to know ahead of time. That's why we post agenda six days early, so that they can come prepared with any testimony to provide to the board before a vote is taken. We shouldn't do surprise motions. That's my advice.
Well, uh, uh, may I just respond to that? It, this isn't a surprise motion. We've already had it on the agenda, but a constituent just brought it up. Uh, it was the same subject as on the agenda previously. Uh, we just heard it. I, you know, in order, because time is important. It was just a suggestion. If, if uh, if that's something that uh we're not allowed to do right now, then um we'll wait till next month, but it has been on the agenda tonight.
Yeah, I think I I I question what what what's going to come out. Like Amanda said, is this legal? But it it, it's a really timely and important question, and it also, if not just for Kool-Aid Place, everything going forward uh as well. Um, you know, yeah. I, we have Councilmember Say here, and I think that it is a really important item, and I'm also would like to have other people come to this and be able to testify in front of our board if it's in fact a motion to have a town hall. If Councilmember Say and Councilmember Waters don't convene a town hall, then I think that, let's give them the chance to do that, if that's something that they would be uh interested in doing. If it doesn't happen, then let's put it on our agenda for next month, is my suggestion. Um, and at this point, we have ten minutes left. Uh, we're not going to finish, be able to finish with all of our, our, our um agenda tonight, and I apologize for those who have sat through this, uh, especially our representatives. We'll see if we can get through that. Um, just in in advance, there were corrected meeting minutes. I suggest that you all look at those. If we don't get to them, um, we don't probably have any committee reports now. Um, and our next meeting's gonna be next month. So with that, I will turn that over to Councilmember Say.
Well, thank you very much, Winston and the board members. I'll be very brief. In the chat, you'll have my newsletter, and then for the upcoming events on seven twenty-two of twenty-three, at Saturday at nine to noon, we have a Blue Zone Kiki to Kupuna event. Moving on, long-term projects, the Harding Avenue speeding once more, the accidents have occurred. And the other big one that Daisy just talked about is the Forridge Affordable Housing at twenty-seven seventy-nine Wiley Avenue. For the residents of St. Louis Heights, I can report that there is an issue in regards to the twenty-five oh five saw place, an unpermitted demolition of a home. Per the inspector, as of six twenty-six twenty-three, site inspection showed that the violation was not corrected. Building permit was not obtained, and that matter has been recommended to the code compliance branch of the Department of Planning and Permitting. For the other residents of St. Louis Drive nineteen nineteen, just be aware that on July twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-three, there will be a zoning boards of appeal public hearing, where they will not be taking testimony, but the residents of St. Louis Drive can listen to this one in regards to short-term vacation rentals. Then for Kapahulu, Leonard's Bakery, Charles Street Parking and Traffic, HPD made regular checks in June and July in response to complaints forwarded by State Representative Nishimoto's office, and also the concerns by Chair Water on the Wiley Avenue District change. Then the other one was the Mokihana Street Crosswalk, and finally, there was a request in the chat for me to check up on regards to the speed bumps. At what intersection, it will be determined, because if the board members realize we did try to address the traffic issues that was affecting the area of residents concerned about the Kapahulu Wyndham Avenue and Charles Street behind Leonard's Bakery. That's one of them, and the other one that I have here also is in regards to the two crosswalks along Kapahulu Avenue, and requested the city to consider removing them as there are nearby crosswalks with functioning traffic and crossing signals to prevent accidents from occurring. The crosswalks without traffic crossing signals of concern are located at Kapahulu Avenue and Mokihana Street and Kapahulu Avenue and Charles Street. And this is where the Department of Transportation Services is conducting an investigation once more. So Winston, for a lot of the speed bumps that the residents are requesting, they'll have to do an investigation, an engineering investigation. And that's what for, that's what happened with Harding Avenue, where they've decided to put up the the delineators and not speed bumps or rumble strips. Rumble strips was a problem because of what? The noise that it created as cars go over it. And that's why they decided to go with the delineators. I think some of the residents were upset at me because they wanted speed bumps, but the engineering studies show that speed bumps may not affect the speeding that occurs, because they'll just go and speed over it, which may then cause the accident to occur, and then blame the city and county of Honolulu. In closing, uh, I will be looking into it, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Councilmember Say. Um, do we have any questions? Uh, someone in person, Dylan?
Yes, Member Decker.
Uh, Member Decker here for Calvin Say, um.
Yes.
In regards to Date Street, um, is there a reason why Date Street is not radar enforced? Thank you.
That's a very good question. We could look into it, and this is where I would need the help of you know who, Bertram and Scott and other state legislators to see if a red light could be erected someplace along that stretch of Date Street, which is a very long, you know, street from Kapahulu Avenue all the way down to uh Kapilani.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Someone else there in person, Dylan?
Yes, Velasco.
Um, yes, uh, Count, Councilman Say, I would love your response to the request for a town hall meeting regarding Kool-Aid's play, place development.
There was a discussion that I did have with the residents, and the town hall meeting that I I had proposed, and they had also agreed upon, was to be a mediator between the landlord and the renters. And if I can go back to my records, and I'll share this with the board next month, I believe the landlord did make a lot of overtures. Chair Welch, I can't recall it all, but there was, you know, like, there's about three or four different concessions that the landlord did make to the residents, and I don't know it all, because I've got so many other issues that I'm dealing with, but I'll be happy to share that copy with you, Chair Welch, to share it with the board members.
But Councilmen Say, there's a lot of other issues just besides the residents regarding that development. And I think a town council meeting is required to discuss all the issues. It's, it's not just one issue.
You're correct, but that discussion had taken place for the past four years. I believe Mr. Wong made a presentation, and he stated for the record, was there three or four meetings that they had on top of the city council meeting, on top of the HHFDC meeting, which is a HHFDC project, which is a state project tied to the Hawaii revised statute of the two oh one H.
Well, I think I, maybe many people, council members, they probably do, would like to have a town hall on this, um, and moving forward for other issues, but you know, I I think citizens can have their own town hall on this, because they may not understand the complexities of the, of, whether it's state, city, what whatever it is. It's, it's a lot of, as you saw yesterday in the um, the anger uh that was, you know, presented at the city council, so um, maybe it's something where we need to have a real community-wide debrief that's very um not time-constrained, and and lets us look at the situation holistically and moving forward so that we can, um, you know, represent uh a lot of concerns that may not have seemed to have been heard uh well, but um, I realize Rome wasn't built in a day, and our meeting is, is at its, as it's closed now, so uh, maybe we can look at this down the road and and uh or immediately and and come up with some solutions if you're amenable to that. Um, otherwise, I mean, the residents can always have their own meeting about this to inform themselves as best as they can. Um, but you'd wanna be there.
No, correct, and I agree with you. If they want to bring both parties together, that is the objective, fine. But at the end of the day, what would you folks want to consider as part of the overall But at the end of the day, what would you folks want to consider as part of the overall town hall meeting? I don't want to go, you know, I don't want to be invited to a place that I'm going to be criticized for my decision, which I thought was the right decision. Because 60% of the units dealt with people in the 120 and below AMI category.
Which is like, I think there's a lot, there's a lot of questions about this that we're not going to be able to solve tonight.
Okay.
And in fact, our, no, 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 there's no need, no need to apologize. We, we appreciate that our, our public servants, you're, you're, you have hard jobs in front of you. And, uh, and it's, it's up to all of us to come together as a community to best decide what we want our community to look at. I'm, I apologize specifically to, um, Representative Kobayashi and, um, Mr. Ihara, uh, that, and Mr. Sayama that we have run out of time tonight and it's not my intent to do so in the future. Uh, we did take an hour this, this evening to set up our shop as it were. So I hope that we have another full hour available to us, uh, for, uh, future, uh, discussions. And with that, I am going to adjourn the meeting for tonight. I wish you all a, um, happy best deal day tomorrow and the rest of July. Dylan, please let us know anything else we need.
Uh, yes, if you can make the announcements, um, just about the next meeting and maybe the archive. Just wanted to apologize for taking up probably 10 minutes of the meeting with my own recommendations and advice. I truly believe that they helped to speed up the meeting. But in the future, I intend to speak less unless asked to. Thank you.
No, absolutely. So look at the, the second page of the agenda. There is the archive on there listed under Google Drive. Um, and also our next meeting will be the second Tuesday of August, I'm sorry, Thursday of August at 6:00 PM. Right here. You can go online at, and, at honolulu.gov slash NCO. Thank you, everyone, for tonight. Have a good evening.